Under administration, we did have someone that did pull their application. So, the, let's see, the resolution to change the nonconforming has been pulled. It will be probably another couple of weeks before they will come back to at that point. So at this time, could you stand and please say the pledge allegiance with us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. Let the roll reflect that Councilmember Leifeld is not with us tonight, but a quorum has been established. Tonight, we have a couple proclamations, and the first one will be for the MS Awareness Week. So if Councilmember Brock, if you would like to start?
Whereas multiple sclerosis, MS, is a neurological disease of the central nervous system affecting nearly 1 million people in the United States alone, and?
Whereas multiple sclerosis generally strikes people in the prime of life between ages 20 through 50, and the cause and course of the often debilitating symptoms of MS remain unknown, and no cure currently exists, and?
Whereas the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been committed for 74 years to a world free of MS, heightening public knowledge about and insight into the disease, and?
Whereas since 1946, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society has been a driving force of MS research, relentlessly pursuing prevention, treatments, and a cure, and has invested more than $1 billion in groundbreaking research, and?
Whereas funds raised through the National Multiple Sclerosis Society fueled 38.7 million, investing in 123 new research projects at the best medical centers, universities, and other institutions throughout the U.S. and abroad, leading to many breakthroughs in the treatments of MS, and? Whereas stopping MS in its tracks, restoring what has been lost, and ending MS forever is in the mission of National Multiple Sclerosis Society, and one that all the Americans and Minnesotans should support, and?
Whereas the city of Hastings recognizes the importance of finding the cause and cure of MS, and expresses its appreciation for the dedication that the National Multiple Sclerosis Society Upper Midwest Chapter has shown towards creating a world free of MS.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of Hastings hereby proclaims March 8th through the 14th, 2020, as MS Awareness Week, and do recommend the subservience of all of our citizens. I encourage the Minnesotans to learn more about multiple sclerosis, and what they can do to support individuals with MS and their families. Do you want to present this with you?
Thank you.
You're welcome. There you go. You want to say a few words?
I would like to thank you for this proclamation. I have lived with MS for 20 years, and it's because of community support from cities like Hastings and the entire state of Minnesota that I and my fellow MSers are able to live our best lives. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have a proclamation, where's Dean? There's Dean, right there, for the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War. Mark, would you start this one, please?
I will. Whereas the 2008 National Defense Authorization Act, which is the public law 110-181-598, empowers the Secretary of Defense and Communities to conduct programs on behalf of the nation and the community that commemorate the 50th anniversary of the Vietnam War, and?
Whereas there are five objectives. First, to thank and honor veterans and families of veterans of the Vietnam War, including personnel who were held prisoners of war or listed as missing in action for their service and sacrifices. Two, to highlight the service of the armed forces during the Vietnam War and the contributions of federal and state agencies and governmental and nongovernmental organizations that served with or in support of the armed services. Number three, to pay tribute to the contributions made on the home front by the people of the United States during the Vietnam War. Number four, to highlight the advances in technology, science, and medicine related to military research conducted during the Vietnam War. And fifth, to recognize the contributions and sacrifices made by the Allies of the United States during the Vietnam War, and?
Whereas according to the Department of Veteran Affairs, 9 million Americans served on active duty in the armed forces during the Vietnam War, and approximately 7 million are living today, and?
Whereas Lance Corporal, United States Marine Corps, Dwayne Foss, and Lawrence Harry Swanson were casualties from the Hastings community, along with 58,000 patriots that are etched in black granite, who sacrificed all they had and all they would ever know, and?
Whereas the community of Hastings will join the nation to thank all United States military veterans and families who served during the Vietnam War today and every day, and? Whereas residents can find more information and enjoy photo, video, and compelling stories at www.vietnamwar50th.com, and through the community at Dakota County Library Pleasant Hill and the Pioneer Room at City Hall.
Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the city of Hastings commemorates the 50th anniversary of the veterans who were today through March 7th through 2nd of March 2020 and beyond. Today, we have with us Dean Marcusson.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Dean, I'd like to present you this, and thank you for everything you do for our community.
Thank you. What I'd like to do tonight is recognize a very important group of Americans, the woman. March is the month of the woman. Words cannot express a debt that cannot be paid as a cost we cannot comprehend. This "thank you" falls short, but honors you for all that you've done, past, present, and in the future. Thank you for your service and your dedication to our country, state, county, and community. Peggy Nichols, the mother of the Hastings warrior to citizen, some 10 to 12 years ago, she cannot be here tonight. It's just like with me, I'm growing old, and should be retired, but both of us keep charging on as prayer warriors for God, the Son and the Holy Spirit. Keep us in your prayers, as we are weak but strong in Him. Whereas, just like Vietnam veterans, women in the military, workforce, and at-home moms have come forward to serve, even when not considered the norm. Women's History Month is March, as a time to reflect on sacrifices made by female trailblazers, and? Whereas, when we value the service of all veterans, we must also pay tribute to all women who have served in the military and at the home front, as they also served our country, state, county, and the community. Whereas, many have made headlines every day, mothers, wives, daughters, and sisters who joined the military or stayed at home, served with pride. And therefore, as the first sergeant, husband and father, I must say, thank you, women, for your service, and I'm proud to have you in the ranks. You have made me stronger, and I'm proud to call you my sisters in arms. Thank you.
Also with us tonight, we have Matt Carter is with us, and he is from the Laduke and the Dakota County Historical Society. Welcome, Matt, and Mariah.
So again, my name is Matt Carter. I'm Executive Director for the Dakota County Historical Society, and I'll start by thanking the council and the city of Hastings for all the support they've given, and continue to give the Dakota County Historical Society as we partner in the operations of the Laduke Estate. I'll turn it over to Mariah to kind of recap what happened, or has happened, over the last year at the site.
So, we've had a lot of different things that have gone on over the last year. We have had our typical events. We've also had different rentals and other events. The report that we sent over, though, does cover from August to January for you, so it's about six months. The numbers on the top are the attendance numbers, and it's important to note that most of these are paid attendance, so this does not reflect, like, our free events to the site, with the exception of August's numbers. It has 640 on it. That actually includes the concert attendance for our free concerts, but all of the other numbers are only paid attendance, so there are people that come to use the site for free, or they wander the grounds that are not reflected in these numbers. So, that's just something that's important to keep in mind. We have had several rentals. Those numbers keep going up. We have more and more people who want to use the site for personal reasons, which is really great, because it's another wonderful source of income that we have for the site. We also have, excuse me, our big events that are still doing really well, like Civil War Weekend, that's always the first weekend after Labor Day in September. We will be hosting that again this year. We're really looking forward to that. We already have reenactors who are very excited and communicating with us about that. We will also be doing the concerts again in August. Also, excitingly, this August, there's an extra Sunday, so we can give one more concert, and Merchants Bank has very graciously given us extra money in their sponsorship, so that we can cover an additional band and concerts. So we'll be able to have five instead of four this year, which is really exciting. We're looking forward to doing that as well. I think as far as that portion, the other thing I want to highlight is just our tees. Those are still doing really well, too. We sold out both of our Victorian holiday tees. We also offered holiday tours again this year in December. They went really well. We didn't have as many people come as we would have liked, but we're actually looking at opening the house earlier next year, so starting in November for holiday tours, and having a few more dates available, so that more people can come and enjoy the house while it's decorated for the season.
And then one of the other documents that was submitted was the budget, so if you have that in front of you, we have our 2019 budget, and then the estimated 2019 year end, and that's pending our financial audit that'll take place coming up here in about April or May. We have a deadline to try and get that done by June, and then our 2020 budget for the site moving forward. One of the things that we point out, and we worked and talked with Dan, trying to figure out the Simmons Fund, so you can see that that number has dropped from what we had been budgeting in the past, so that number's gone down. Under the 2020 budget, I know Mariah's going to mention it a little bit later here, but we have put in a conservative number as far as our fundraising goal. We are starting a fundraiser for the site, so not knowing or having done this event in the past, we kind of just threw a number out there. I think we'll exceed the number that we had put out there in our internal placeholder, but that number at the 2020 budget that you can see at the bottom there should hopefully, you know, again, be an equal or no loss to the site, going back the last probably five or six years. We've cut a deficit for the site from about 40,000 to 50,000 a year, down to this last year of about 10. In this next year, we're hoping that again, budget-wise, it's going to be about four, but we're hoping with that fundraiser that we have, again, with a conservative estimate that we put in there, it'll actually break even on the site, again, hopefully for the first time in a long time. So I'll turn back over to Mariah, and we'll talk about some of the upcoming events that we have going on.
So I already jumped in a little bit and told you about the concerts that was supposed to be next, so that is happening, too, but the other things we're going to be really excited to put on in this upcoming season is we have five dates that will be children's program dates, so we're going to do day camps. They will be Fridays in June and July, and they are co-ed day camps aimed at the ages of seven to 13, and each camp will have a different theme. So we're going to do one on gardening and agriculture. We'll do one on artists, and we'll actually have an art teacher come in, and they can learn a project from them. I'm also partnering with Spencer Johnson on two of them, one about Native Americans and one about the Civil War, and then we'll do one that's themed for school 150 years ago, so we'll talk about what school was like in the Victorian era. We're also going to be offering one teen program, and this will be centered around social media, so the premise will be like how we use social media in the history field, but also how to be responsible on social media, and to know that what you put out there stays out there, so how can you represent yourself as best as possible. So that'll be geared toward children ages 13 to 17, and 13 may seem a little young, but you only have to be 13 to have an Instagram account, so we want to make sure that we're getting them at that starting age, too. Facebook also is lowering their ages typically, too, for how old do you have to be to sign up, so I think it's important to target the younger kids, too, for this event. The other idea behind this is that we are hopefully going to be launching a Facebook page for William Laduke, and they will get to create posts, so they get to research William and create a post that will actually go live on the page about something that he did, and it can be satirical if they want, it can be very literal if they want, but it would be a fun way for us to then have another way to engage through social media with even younger audiences or other people, but to put out information about William and his family himself versus just our page, which we do do that on for the Laduke Facebook page, but we do a lot of showcasing of events. So we thought this would be a fun way for kids to get involved as well, and to see how history and social media actually go together really well. Matt mentioned our fundraiser. We are working with Hastings Golf Club and Events. We're actually partnering with them, and we will be hosting our fundraiser at that location. In this way, we can ensure that there's enough room, and if there's poor weather, we don't have to try to find an alternate venue, and it's going to be a beer battle. So we had a lot of feedback from community members who like the idea of having a chance to have alcohol at events, but also to do something fun and different at the site, so we are going to be contacting local brewers. Spyro Brewery is actually already on board with this, which is really exciting, and some other Dakota County, oh my goodness, Dakota County brewers, as well as broadening it to statewide, and they can come in, and you would get to pay to join the event, to be a participant. You also get votes when you pay your admission, and then you vote on your favorite brewers as you get to do sort of a tasting and testing. The other thing is, we're going to capitalize on the fact that it is 2020 and do a throwback to prohibition, so it'll be a sort of a speakeasy theme. It may be called the bootlegging beer battle. We haven't nailed down a name yet, but that's what we're kicking around. So we're really excited about this. We're hoping that this fundraiser is going to be really successful and bring in additional funds for the site, so that we can allocate funds to other areas of need as well. We are also going to, again, be hosting Civil War Weekend, like I mentioned, and candlelit tours, so those are things that we can look forward to coming up here in 2020.
Yeah, and then looking beyond 2020 into 2021 and beyond, one of the things we're looking at doing, and so I believe it was maybe six months to a year ago, Mariah had put together a site plan that we had submitted, and we're moving forward with that. So the Simmons Shed that's on the grounds is going to be turned into a rotating exhibit space every year, so Mariah has plans as to what that'll be coming up, but then also the Carriage Barn has the story of George Daniels, who was a slave that was in the Confederate Army that played dead after a battle and made his way to the Union lines, and then eventually came back to Hastings with William Laduke. Right now, the Simmons, or the Carriage Barn only shows or tells a small portion of his life, and it's mainly what it was like when he was here on the grounds at the Laduke Estate, but with the recent documentary that came out about George Daniels, we're trying to expand that story. So the rest of the Carriage Barn, we're going to actually try and tell his life story before he met William Laduke as much as we can, based on the information we have, and then what happened once they left Hastings and went out to South Dakota. So coming up here, I believe it's in May, we'll be submitting a grant to bring in a consulting group or exhibit designers to come up with a concept of what that exhibit would look like, and this is based off of a previous grant that we had presented about, where we brought in the public to get their feedback on what they liked, or what they wanted to see or experience at the site, and one of those things or ideas that came out of it was being able to see more exhibits, so that if they, you know, come in and they're waiting for a tour to start, they don't leave the grounds and then potentially not come back. They'll stay on the grounds, go through these exhibits, and then be able to go on the tour or go on the tour and then stay on the grounds a little bit longer after. So hopefully, we'll be able to get that in place, and we're hoping within about three years to have that done, that exhibit. So about one year for the first phase of the grant, to get that all figured out, get a design concept, and then another year or so after that to implement the grant.
The other thing that we are looking at is interpretive signage, and that was also on the proposal that I gave to you at our last report. So this would be adding additional signage to the grounds, mostly to make the grounds themselves more enriching, so that when we aren't open for tours, you can still come and experience the history there, but also learn something. So some of the signs we're looking at, for example, is one that explains what the Ice House was used for, how it was used, what its function was during that time, why was it a hole in the ground. We're also looking at one that explains what the Carriage Barn is, one that discusses Andrew Jackson Downing, who is the architect that designed the floor plan for the Laduke. We're also hoping to have a sign near the parking lot that says what our hours are and our typical opening season. That way, they don't walk all the way up to the house and go, "I really thought they were open." You know, we want to let them know then, that yes, you can still wander the grounds, but we actually aren't open for tours in January, or whenever it is that they're coming. We also want to have a map of the grounds that just shows people where everything is, and also that lets them know that there are walking paths that they can take advantage of in the woods, so that would be another portion of the signage that would be added as well. These aren't going to be like large signs, so don't think like one that you could see while standing 20 feet away from it and read everything that's on there. It would be more of a walk-up sign. This is something that we discussed with Shippeau as well, because in that way, it's not invasive of the site itself, it doesn't detract from the history that's there, but you can still learn from it. So it would be more of a small exhibit sign on a stand versus like a big historic site billboard-type sign, if that makes sense.
And then the last thing I'll point out is, in this plan, which we had done in the past, is you don't see a marketing plan. One of the reasons for that is we are actually attempting to work with the University of St. Thomas's Communications Department. They work with nonprofit organizations free of charge, and they help create marketing plans for the organization they're working with. So we're hoping to work with them to get one of those in place that would be for the organization, but also specifically the Laduke Estate as well. If that falls through, we will create the marketing plan either way. It's just right now, we're in the process of attempting to get a partnership established with the University of St. Thomas to do that. So with that, we'll open it up if there's any questions.
Great, sure. Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks for that. When you mentioned signage, I know we have the one fairly decent-sized sign facing west. Have we looked at, has the board looked at signs on Highway 61, the kind of the brown sign saying the Laduke Mansion up on the right, or just trying to give some exposure to, because if you drive by it, 30,000 cars, that's the building over there, but if they don't, they're not stopping to read that sign. Is there something that we can kind of highlight saying upcoming on the right is Laduke or anything like that?
Yeah, so to go off of that, I think it was last year or potentially the year before, we had talked with Justin Fortney about what are the requirements for signage or the limitations for signage out front, because right now, the only real sign you see is the one that's flat along the fence. So again, if you're driving by, if you're looking for a sign facing you, you don't see it, and then if you look and you're, you know, at the stoplight, you see it flat against the fencing there, you may not be able to turn in there. So we had talked with him about trying to get what the requirements or limitations are to do something that would be a bigger, more visible sign that would be facing, you know, so that you could see it on the road without having to be, you know, flush against it, and I don't know if there's been a conversation yet as to like the informational signage. I believe that we had talked to the county about some more signage, but depending on what road it's on, there's different stipulations, because it's a county highway versus a city road, so that could be part of that total discussion, because I know we were looking to see what funding might be available to help offset those costs, because signs, you know, large signage isn't cheap, so.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the Facebook profile is really interesting. I'm not sure about this, but is 197, does that make Laduke the oldest person to have a Facebook account, maybe? I don't know.
It might be. We should look into that.
All right, Councilmember Fulch?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to personally thank Mariah for the hospitality that she has shown this last holiday season. I had called Mariah to ask, would she open the Laduke to allow the Hastings hockey team to come and have a breakfast there over the holidays, and it was like right after Christmas, before New Year's Eve, and she did so, and we had 40 boys, and afterwards, I asked my son, what did the guys think? And he said they all thought it was pretty cool to be there, and the house was beautiful. So I would highly recommend folks to have an event there, particularly over the holiday season, because it was really just very well decorated, very tasteful, and again, your hospitality was so warm, and I can't thank you enough for doing that over the, you know, it was an early morning Saturday between Christmas and New Year's Eve, and Mariah came, and it was really cold and icy that day, too. There was an ice storm.
It was that icy day, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so anyhow, I just can't thank you enough for doing that, so.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
All right, thank you. Great updates. Today, we have with us, too, Dave Unmott, and he is with the League of Minnesota Cities. Welcome, Dave, and he's going to give us a little presentation, too.
Good evening. Thank you very much. As the mayor said, my name is Dave Unmott. I'm a mayor, member of the council, staff, and citizens. I work for the League of Minnesota Cities. I'm the Executive Director. You have five items before your consent agenda, and I'm the fourth, so I'll be very efficient and as brief as I can, because I know Chad's coming up, and before I close, I'm going to make a note of Chad. I've been around local government a long time. I'm not going to get into my resume, but I was really impressed with how you went around the room in the proclamation read. I've attended dozens, if not hundreds, of council meetings and county board meetings in my career, which spans close to 35 years, and I've never seen that. Now, you might not be the only community that does it. You might have borrowed it from someone else, but from my career and all the times I've done that, I've never seen that. I thought that was very impressive, and I wanted you to know that. Secondly, is I used to work for Dakota County, so some of the folks here in this room know that. From 1992 to 1997, I was the Deputy County Administrator, so I office right up the street at the courthouse up there, and spent a lot of time in this building and this area, and I'm very familiar with it. So although I'm new to the Hastings City Council meeting, obviously, I'm not unfamiliar to this community and this location. I used to host training sessions upstairs, and I don't know what the call, the name of the room up there, but it's a pretty cool room, and it's kind of brought back a bunch of memories when I came down here. Just a few items, unless there's any questions. The first and most important thing I must do is to thank the city of Hastings, the City Council and the staff for your great support for the League. The League is the largest municipal-based association for city governments in the state of Minnesota. There's 833 members in the League. There's 853 cities. Those 20 cities are very small, very, very small, so almost all cities are members of the League, so we're quite significantly... So all, almost all cities are members of the league, so we're quite significantly large. And I'm, I say emphatically and with a great deal of genuineness that the City of Hastings, the participation that you have is outstanding for the conferences and the training, the adult learning things we do, the events you participate in, the contributions you make. I mean, just, just recently, the event that you attended that really kind of, when I leaned over to the mayor and said, you know, I need to get down to the council meeting, he said, anytime. And I reached out to Dan and we picked the date and, you know, here I am. So it couldn't happen that quick. The City of Hastings Council, I'm not exactly sure who's doing it, is making a presentation on a topic at our annual meeting. That's unusual. You've reserved a lot of different places for the respectful workplace training that we're going to put on and we've got a new program partnering with a new vendor. The number of seats that have been reserved are pretty significant for our community, so I'm really impressed with that. But just your ongoing support and participation, and it actually goes back with a twist of irony. So the president of the league, when I was hired in 2015, was the former administrator in Hastings who was here a long time, Dave Osberg. Dave was president when he was with the City of Eagan, where I live, so I'm a member of Dakota County, but he started on the board when he was here in the City of Hastings. And he became president through time. You have to be on the board a number of years and he became president when he was the City of Eagan. But he wouldn't have been able to do that had he not been supported by this city council and this community to allow him to do that when he first started. So what do we do? Real briefly, the city leaders know, but I'll touch on probably the most important thing, especially right now, is legislative advocacy. And I know later on your agenda, I noticed you have your legislative program where you're going to talk about that. We spend a lot of time at the Capitol representing cities in a variety of interests. And it's a short session this year, it's going to happen quick, but there's a lot going on. And one of the issues that we've been dealing with quite aggressively is the, is our relationship with the building community and the building industry and in the managing of local control and the ability for you to make decisions in that area and to make decisions that are right for your community and aren't kind of generic throughout the entire state. So watch for that kind of communication that comes from us, watch for announcements and alerts that we have on, on what's happening in that area. There's lots of other things that are going on and, and funding and so forth, but that's one that's unique to us based on what the builders are alleging about affordable housing and what they're alleging about the role of municipal governments in that complex conversation. And we're paying a lot of attention to it and there's a press conference tomorrow with some senators who are introducing some bills that we don't particularly like and we'll respond to that. But it's, the session goes through, you know, April and early May and we're going to be attentive and attuned to that. And when I get around and about, whether I'm speaking to larger groups or speaking to small groups, I just call attention to that because it's unique. But there are other things too that you might have an interest in, certainly leave that up to you. One reason why I'm here is the league has a really strong vested interest in reaching out to its members and not just having members come to the league. We're a classic association in that way where people call us or email us or they have concerns or we represent you in litigation and all kinds of different things we do, insurance. But we have a real passion in supporting our cities and a real passion in getting out and meeting cities in their place, in their terms, in their city halls. We do this a lot. We do it in trips all throughout the state of Minnesota, not just where, you know, I live 15 miles away, which is pretty easy for me to do, you know? So it makes this one a little more convenient, but we spend a lot of time doing that. We're committed to it. We learn, we listen, we engage. We're better representing you in the many dimensions that we do as a league because of it and that's really important. And especially when we have people that are adult learning experiences, we're changing the phraseology from training and conferences to adult learning, because that's really what we do. We teach adults how to learn and how to apply those skills to help their communities do a better job. And we're involved in that. I'll close with just kind of two, two thoughts and one relates to the person who follows me and then any questions you may have, is we are really trying new things at the league with webcasts and podcasts and different ways to communicate. Learners learn differently and, and, you know, I've been in local government for 35 years and, you know, although I love my job and I'm going to be there as long as I can, the future isn't with me. The future is with others who we want to encourage to be part of city councils and be part of city government that might be in their 20s and 30s or they're thinking about, you know, do I want to run for city council? Do I want to work for a staff? Do I want to be part of a team? And we're really deep into the answer of that to be yes. And so we have to be, we have, I don't want to say cutting edge, but we have to be really insightful and thoughtful about what we say, how we say it and how we teach and encourage people to be part of that, whether it's something as easy as civics in education or our messaging or the workplace. What's it like to work for a city? What's it like to work for the league? We compete hard with the private sector, with the nonprofit sector, the schools, the counties and lots of other people for the best and the brightest. And we, we really believe in city government and we want city government to get those people, to get my kids, to get your kids and my, I don't have any grandkids, but maybe someday, you know, to get my grandkids to work for cities where I've invested my career, you know, for a long time. And so we're working on that. And how we do that, it's different than when I started and it's going to be different in five, 10 and 15 years, but that's something we're very conscious of, what makes us more relevant to help you do your job. And I'll, and I'll close that with this. That's really why we exist, to support you, to deliver services to your community, people that are here and the people that are watching, the people that may be on and about. And finally then, it's ironic that, that I walked in and I saw Chad standing there. I whispered in his ear. I won't tell you what I whispered, but it was something along the lines of, what are you doing here? I just recently met him, 60 days ago maybe, 45 days ago, and I've probably seen him a dozen times now since. He's done work for the league. You remember he was the last speaker. He, we were just with him on Saturday, sitting at a table with him and then he did our last speaking job in Baxter. But more relevant to that is I understand he's going to do your workshop, your retreat. He's going to facilitate that. He did one of those for us 30 days ago or thereabouts for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Trust that I was part of. We had probably 20 to 24 people. And we had had the same facilitator for 10 years, eight years? So someone we were very comfortable with, who did a great job, but it was just time for a change. And to have him come in to do that in a, in kind of a, in a culture that was used to someone else was hard. And we had that conversation, him and I and others might have, in his pre-call that he made with me. And I said, it's not going to be easy because we're used to someone else. Bottom line is he did a great job. He understood that, he was conscious of it, he did a great job. And he's going to follow up with the trust in July to do it again, if that's, that not the best decision you can make. If we invite him back to do it again, that tells you how well he did in a, in a difficult circumstance, only because it was changed for us. So with that, mayor, members of the council, I'll pause. I can certainly answer any questions. Again, the primary obligation I wanted to do is to thank you and to thank your community for your support and participation in our stuff. We're better because Hastings is part of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Counsel, any questions or comments for Dave? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Dave, for coming today. It's really wonderful to see you. And for those in the audience, whenever we go to league events, I mean, oftentimes Dave is there personally giving welcomes and providing comments and such, and so thank you for the leadership that you provide to us as local government officials statewide. And something I in particular wanted to thank the league staff for is making more and more webinars available online for us to be able to tune into. You know, I see all of the, you know, all the workshops and meetings that you make available to us to attend and I wish I could make it to them all. And I so appreciate it when you take the time to make it a webinar so that if we can't dra, you know, drive an hour, hour and a half sometimes to get to those locations or just to be able to, you know, watch it late at night, you know, when we have the time to be able to tune in. In particular, like for instance, the Tobacco 21 issue that you did a webinar and then you taped it and made it available for folks to watch later on and tonight that's on our agenda. And so it's a great resource to be able to view on our, on our own. And so anyhow, I just wanted you to know that it's really appreciated and so thanks for everything that you do. I really love going to the league events.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
We'll probably see you in a few weeks.
Have a great night. Yep, thank you.
Thank you. As you stated, we have Chad Weinstein with us and he is with the Ethical Leaders in Action. Welcome, Chad.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and council members, it's a privilege to be here. I will give you the gift of brevity, because you only get one chance to make a first impression. I am here to introduce the work that we'll be doing together that was planned by staff led by Mr. Witichah and to ask for your help in advance and making sure that we make excellent use of your time. My name, as you said, is Chad Weinstein. My firm is Ethical Leaders in Action. We have the privilege of working with leaders in the public and private sector to help them to become their best and this engagement will be no exception. I look forward to facilitating your council workshop retreat in the coming weeks. Our goals for the retreat, as you know, are to engage council and staff in a discussion to reflect on your roles in working together, observe what's working extremely well and look for some opportunities where they might exist to improve that interaction, collaboration as well. And in fact, the larger objective is to engage council and staff in a discussion to establish some broad strategic initiatives. Our goal is to be limited and focused in establishing those initiatives, to build on the work that you've done in the past, to assure that, look, going forward, staff has a clear and shared sense of the, the council's vision and your strategic priorities so that they can plan and execute initiatives to implement and execute on that vision and, and, and move towards those priorities. That's the goal. Those are the goals for our day together. Now, it's only one day. And so to prepare for that and to make sure that I can make good use of your time, I would like very much to interview each of you individually. I already had an opportunity to work with staff as, the staff leadership as a, as a team and have extended an invitation to directors to meet with me as well. I will send out questions to you in advance. The thrust of those questions really are about, from your perspective, what is working extremely well? Where might there be room for improvement? And I'm going to ask each of you articulate three top strategic priorities. I'm going to then take those priorities, put them in a common framework and make them an appendix to the agenda for the, for the retreat so that you can all see where one another is coming from, where you are all coming from. And then we'll lead a process to sort of focus the group on establishing shared strategic priorities. So look for an email from Mr. Witichah and from me with questions and an invitation to meet. I am entirely happy to do it by phone. If you'd prefer to meet in person, I'll also make myself available for that. I'm at your service and we will take that input to inform the design of the retreat and as input to that initial strategic planning process. With that, I will pause and see and answer any questions.
Thank you, Chad. Counsel, any questions or comments? Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Something that I've brought up in the past is that it would be very helpful, rather than just asking for each of us for opinions on issues, is to actually have some fact-based data that's behind what our goal setting is. We don't, we don't hear, or at least I should speak for myself because maybe others are getting information elsewhere, but I don't hear specifically enough about what are, with data, what are the most, the biggest challenges facing our community? It would be really nice to have, the, the departments also bring forward, you know, like, okay, you know, I'm in, I'm just making something up, like I'm in the police department and we were talking about crime in the community and drugs and such. And so like what are the biggest challenges facing our community from a public safety, you know, standpoint? From the police perspective and then perhaps, you know, fire would be another public safety perspective. You know, what are they seeing, what are they seeing as the biggest challenges? And so I just throw that out there because, I mean, I know well enough to know what a lot of the major issues are that are within our community, but it would be really nice to have actual facts behind those decisions and then, and so that we're driving all in the same direction so that we all have like a commonality and understanding about just metrics. What are the metrics? Because if you can't measure success, how do you know if you ever get there? And so that, that's something that I often see as kind of a, an opportunity for improvement when we're doing our, our planning amongst ourselves is so that we're not just having our own opinions of matters so that they're actually more factually based. So enough said. Thanks.
All right. Thanks, Chad, and we'll be hearing and seeing you in the end of the month, I think.
I look forward to it. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And thank you all. Thank you for your comment.
Okay, councilmembers, are there any corrections to the minutes from the February 18th meeting? Seeing none, they are approved. Comments from the audience? Is there anyone here who would like to address the council at this time? Anyone here who would like to address the council at this time? Councilmembers, are there any council items to be considered? I would like to add a proclamation of Minnesota Food Chair and Hastings Family Service. If there's any objections from council? Okay, we will add that under administration number three. I hear a motion to approve of the consent agenda with, oh, sorry. Sorry, we'll move that. Now I'm onto the consent agenda. Counsel, I would like to accept a motion to approve the consent agenda. Councilmember Lund?
Your Honor, I'd like to pull number four for discussion.
Okay. And at that point, we will add that under administration number four. Counsel, I will now accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with number four removed. Councilmember Bassani? Councilmember Brock? Saw those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. For this item, we have an introduction by Public Works. Welcome, Ryan. And followed by a public hearing, then potentially action by city council.
Okay, thank you, mayor, members of the council. Yes, tonight we'll be talking a little bit about the proposed project scope and features for our 2020 improvement project. So this is our project map of the areas we'll be discussing tonight. This is 15th Street from Pine Street over to Tyler and then the Cannon Street area, which includes Cannon, 22nd, 23rd, 24th and 25th. We'll go through specifics about the project improvements. We'll conduct, I'll turn it back to the mayor to conduct the public hearing. From that point, we'll be looking for consideration of a resolution to order the improvements, approve plans and authorize ad for bids. Couple photos here just of what, what we're dealing with. In our pavement management program, we're always seeking to address our, our pavements that are beyond their useful life. 15th Street has been on our radar screen for some time. If you've driven it, you've probably know what I'm talking about. We have a lot of differential settlement on that roadway, aged pavement, cracking, a lot of patching. Here's an example over on the Cannon area. This is 23rd Street. A lot of times our, our curb lines start to spill over into the roadway. That, that water gets down into our base. It further weakens our roads. We get, we get spots like this. This is alligator cracking, poor base condition, pavements that we need to address. Part of our project too, we find areas like this where water has no place to go. So when we have the streets ripped up, we look at upgrading the storm sewer system. Here's a prime location where we'll be looking to add a catch basin in this location and can convey that water away from the roadway. And just one more example here of, this is alligator cracking. That's, that's extended beyond just the, the cracking and potholes are starting to get formed here. And we keep throwing good after bad. Patches keep popping up. This is kind of why you see these roads in the, in the Capitol Improvement Program. So some of our goals, once, once we've identified the roadways is, number one is to, to address that failing pavement. So that's how it finds, we, we select our project areas and we put our projects together initially. When we're out there, we also, like I said, we look at replacing the concrete curb and gutter. That's our edge control to our streets. If it needs replacing, this is the time to do it. We do, do a look in our comprehensive plan and we also try to improve the pedestrian experience. We look at our trail system and our sidewalk system and, and we enhance that when it's, when it's applicable. Street drainage is improved as well. We've got the streets torn up. It's the time to extend our storm sewer system. And then also we have the opportunity to address our aging infrastructure beneath our roadways. So it's our water system and our sanitary sewer system. Some goals specific to 15th Street. 15th Street's a little unique for us. It's a, it's a higher volume roadway. It carries more traffic than our, our typical neighborhood or, or local street network. This is a major collector road. It's on our municipal It's on our municipal state aid system, so we do, that means we have to design it to certain standards to achieve funding in addition to other funding sources on the project. Carries 6,500 vehicles per day. That's west of Vermillion. And also carries 3,200 vehicles per day east of Vermillion. So, those are some recent counts we took, I believe, last summer. We also recognize there's some high parking demand at Pioneer Park. Talked with our Parks Department, our own observations, other staff. We know we needed to accommodate for some of that. And then also, like I said earlier, this corridor is not only busy with vehicles, but also it serves a lot of neighborhoods. We know the pedestrian experience is important as well. So, our tools in the toolbox for street improvements. We always try to look and do a reclaim project. That's our recycling program. We grind up the pavement. We grind up the underlying aggregate. We recycle that material, mix it together, reshape, recompact, and then we could put a new pavement surface on top of that. So, a lot of times in this situation, we can salvage good curbs if they are good. We spot repair them. So, this is a lower-cost improvement, and if our utilities beneath the roadway are good, we oftentimes go to this solution. So, this is, this year, this is proposed for Cannon and 22nd Street. Our reconstruct program, little more significant, little more costly, when we have bad utilities underneath our roadway or insufficient structure of our roadway, when we have to replace with new materials, we have to dig up the road. We also have the opportunity to do some road narrowing or adjust grades of the road as well because we reset curb and gutter edge control of our streets. So, that's kind of the combination we look at when we select a reconstruct project. This is proposed this year for 15th Street, 23rd, 24th, and 25th Street. Once we select a base improvement, then we test that base. We get engineering approval on that base for all our roadways, and then we pave with typically two or three lifts of pavement to finish the project. So, diving a little deeper, our utility improvements for this year, we do a combination of checking the age of our utilities. We check the pipe material, our records, and then we work with Public Works Department to identify breaks or other things that have gone wrong with the system. For 15th Street, we have proposed a full utility replacement from Pine over to Vermillion. So, sanitary sewer system and the water main system would be replaced along this stretch. Also, there's portions of those utilities in 15th Street east of Vermillion. We would take the opportunity to loop for redundancy, some of our water main, and then replace some of the aging water main as well. The Cannon area, we have water main replacement on 23rd, 24th, and 25th, but we are able to line, and I'll go into that a little bit later in the presentation, but we have the ability to line those segments of our sanitary sewer systems, so that's in the program as well. Our water main replacement is just like it sounds. We're digging up old, typically cast iron pipe, and we're replacing that with new materials. In this case, this year would be PVC or plastic pipe on the project. New hydrants, new gate valves, the whole system would get replaced. Sanitary sewer, very similar. Typically, sanitary sewer is a little bit deeper, so we use, in the picture here, you see a trench box that allows us to keep the excavations neat and a little, in the space that they're actually needed versus impacts much wider than what we'd like. Lining. We do look to line our sanitary sewer whenever possible. We get televising cameras on this entire system before we come in and select these improvements. Some pipes are, just have too much sag or joint separation, and lining's not even an option, so that's why you see the difference. But when we have the ability to line, we do that, and we run a liner through, and that's all heat cured. And it's, when it's set up, it's just like a new pipe. So, like I said, good technology, and we utilize it quite often. After we replace the mains, both sewer and water, we also take the opportunity to do individual service replacements. So, that's replacement of service lines from the mains to the home, and we stop at the property line. So, we don't go into private property. We don't do any work outside of our right-of-way, but we do extend new service pipes to the property line. We do that to sort of protect our investment of the new roadway. We want to make sure there's no leaks or breaks under those old aged service lines and keep that pavement good long into the future. Again, here's the storm sewer and drainage improvements. We have to, like I showed earlier, extend pipes to new areas to drain the new street surfaces. We also take the new rainfall data. We're getting more intense rainfalls, so we model those events, and we look and make sure our pipe sizes are adequate to carry the storm sewer away, or storm water away from our roadways. So, we have a lot of upsizing on the project as well. We have found that if we get this portion right and we find ways to address the drainage, we can extend the useful life of the road. So, this is a good investment for us to be doing at this time. Sidewalks, I'll get into 15th Street in a little bit, but on the Cannon area, the streets over there didn't have sidewalks currently. They had impacts, homes, setbacks, trees, et cetera. Extending a new sidewalk system would have been pretty invasive in that neighborhood, but there was a little segment along Cannon Park. We have a remnant sidewalk that just ends partway alongside the park, along Cannon, so we're going to take the opportunity to connect the two neighborhoods, north and south, Hackberry and 31st, with an ADA-compliant five-foot sidewalk. So, we'll be completing that segment with this project. One thing to expand on a little bit, the boulevard trees, we're able to not really impact any trees on this year's project. We know how impactful that can be, so we usually design around it. We make decisions such that we're not getting into root systems or drip lines of trees, and we know the before and after math if we don't take serious precautions to do that. So, we currently don't have any proposed tree removal on the project. And again, that's to preserve that character of the neighborhood after we're done and through the area. Street width. So, 15th Street, we are proposing to reduce 15th Street from 40 feet wide currently down to 36 feet. So, there's a reduction in width. That would give us 11-foot drive lanes and 7-foot parking lanes, so we'd look to continue to accommodate parking on both sides for some of the businesses along 15th Street, the churches, and especially the pioneer park overflow parking. West of Vermillion, on the south side, we'd be looking to narrow from the south side. That allows us to put a five-foot wide sidewalk separated from the curb. So, I'll have a photo of that in just a few slides here, but we're able to have one consistent sidewalk that's ADA-compliant on the south side of 15th Street. East of Vermillion, there we have a little bit wider street segment. It's more closer to a 40-foot, 44-foot wide street, so we're able to keep that consistent narrowing of 36 feet wide, and we'll replace both sidewalks that currently exist over on that side, again, separated from the back of curb. So, what that looks like, you can see here. Here's west of Vermillion. We have the 36-foot wide street width, and then we'll have a grass boulevard behind the curb on the south side, and then we'll have a consistent concrete sidewalk at five-foot width with ADA-compliant pad ramps to get onto and off of that sidewalk system. Over on the east side, similar with the 36-foot wide width, and then we have sidewalks on both sides of the street. There currently is a sidewalk there now. Difference here is they'd be offset, you know, approximately five feet or so to give a safer experience when you're, so you're not walking right up against the curb line, On 23rd, 24th, and 25th, those are reconstructed as well. The same 36-foot wide width out there, we would keep that in place. The purpose over there is we're able to take advantage of some of the existing storm sewer system that's adequately sized now. We don't want to rip those up and move those narrower just for the sake of narrowing, so we're able to keep some of that in place. We may be able to save some curb and gutter. We didn't want to mess with the parking restrictions over there. We've seen heavy parking along those streets, and we also see the commercial access with its vicinity of, along Vermillion there. Didn't want to mess with those driveways as well. The reclaimed streets, Cannon and 22nd, those all have the same width as they currently are. That's because we keep those curb lines in the same location, so don't really have an opportunity to do any sort of narrowing there. We would obviously do spot curb and gutter replacement where it's necessary. Cost of all these improvements, about $4.7 million. The way it breaks out here is we, our bonded debt is about $1.9 million. That includes the street and storm sewer improvements. We have an assessment proposed at about $770,000. Our sewer, sanitary sewer funds would be about $465,000. Water main funds, $835,000. And then we're proposing about $750,000 from municipal state aid system. Just a note on assessments, we did, again, receive a report from an independent third-party appraiser to develop those assessments, but we will go into more detail at that on assessments at our April 6th meeting. So, that'll be coming up. We'll dive, we'll take a deeper dive into assessments. It also should be noted that at the end of the week, individualized statements will be going out to each property owner. This is on the heels of back in January. We did have open houses to talk with the residents about this project at that meeting. We also made the preliminary assessment roll available. We shared those assessments amounts with residents as well. We had about a 30% turnout at those meetings. So, our project timeline, tonight, we're here to talk about the improvements and open it up to a public hearing as we conclude with the presentation. Counsel will consider resolution to move the project forward. As I said, April 6th, we'll conduct the assessment hearing. We'll open bids in April as well, and at the second meeting in April, move on to awarding a construction contract if everything comes in on budget. So, construction would pick up in May, depending on how wet it is, is how early they would get start, but they'd have the opportunity to start in May and conclude in October. Just a little plug for our communications campaign. We do commit to doing, once we're in construction, weekly construction updates. That covers what's been done for the week and what's coming the next week, so you know when your area's getting impacted and what's being done and why. We've already started the process and received a handful of residential community surveys that lets us know how you want to be communicated with, so it can be via email, via text, or we do centrally locate a mailbox where we put hard copies of our updates in for people to get as they're walking to and from their homes. When we do have critical activities, like pouring of concrete in somebody, in front of somebody's driveway, you've got to stay out of that for five to seven days for it to cure. When we do that, we get out in front of that activity. We do door hangers. We do door knocking. We make sure you're aware, you get your cars out. So, we're very hands-on with those activities and those impacts. We also keep our city website up to date, and feel free to contact city staff at any time. Our department's number's there, and you can reach any one of us on the project. And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Ryan. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone wish to discuss anything? Sure. Welcome to the podium and state your name and address, please.
Thank you. My name is Paul Peters. I live at 295 West 15th. I've been a homeowner there since 1987, and most of the people that live in my area have been there for 20-plus years. And you guys keep referring to 15th as a street. It's not a street anymore. It's a small highway. And if you live there, you're going to find out that it's not a good place to live with all the traffic and the noise. There's nothing I can do about that. I'm all for the improvements because the road stinks. You're making the road four feet narrower, and you're putting a two-foot buffer on my side of the road. Is that because you're not going to do the sidewalks anymore? Right now, the city removes the snow on the sidewalks on 15th Street. That was an agreement that was made with the property owners in 1977. Is that changing?
The residents would have to take care of snow removal if it's separated from the back of curb.
So, that's the reason you're putting in that two-foot buffer?
No, the reason we're putting in the boulevard is to separate the walking public from the roadway.
But you're only doing it on one side of the road, correct?
Correct.
Why?
Right-of-way constraints. Not enough room on both sides.
And that's why the sidewalk does not go all the way from Eddy Street to Pine Street on the north side of the highway or on the north side of the road?
Correct.
When you do the sewer work, and you said you were going to keep us notified, excuse me, I have a boat in my driveway that's part of my business. What am I supposed to do with that when I can't get in on my driveway? Anybody got any ideas? And I know it probably sounds pretty trivial to most of you, but it's 25-foot long, and I have a business where I guide on the river. And if you guys want, I can come and park it in your guys' driveway, but I'm there at 2:00 in the morning, and I'm back home at midnight. What should I do with it?
Impacts during project, I mean, we'll, we'll, local traffic will have access to, you know, you're not going to be cut off from getting to and from. There may be, if, about five days where you're going to have to pull your boat out and park on an adjacent street when your concrete's being cured for your new driveway end and the curb and gutter in front of your home. Other than that, the contractor will be required to keep access to and from.
Okay.
It just will be on a gravel surface for that time being.
So, when I have to move that boat off my property, is the city going to insure it in case of vandalism?
You may want to have a direct question that he's got to you and then have them answered in orderly fashion, just back and forth. It's still a little difficult for the staff.
Okay, so, Paul, if you could, direct the questions to us.
Okay, I'm sorry. When the contractors are doing the extensive work, whether it's replacing the sewer in front of my house, so there's a hole in the road, or the concrete is being poured, it's been suggested that I move that off my property. If I put it on a public street close to my home, is the city going to cover insurance if somebody comes by and decides to hit it with a hammer or slash my tires or?
I'll defer that to our attorney.
Your Honor, I can answer that, no. The answer is no. You'll have to find other places to store it for that period of time or work out a solution to keep it on your property, but the city will not insure your property.
Okay. That's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the public hearing? Anyone else? Okay. At this time, I will close the public hearing. Counsel discussion. Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. One thing that sparked my mind when the gentleman mentioned the fact that, or the opinion that it's a highway or whatnot, the narrowing of a road, I'd like you to speak to that a little bit of what the logic behind that is, psychology behind that, too. I think a lot of people that travel, I mean, I live on 36th Street, so I have the exact same problem that you do. We have a lot of speed issues and whatnot, but maybe even worse because it's a newer neighborhood and the trees aren't developed and so forth. So, if you could explain... explain what that does and why we're, one of the reasons why we are narrowing the roads. It's not, it's, it's not just for fun. It's, it's, there's a purpose behind it.
Yeah, tha- thank you, Councilmember Lund. Uh, we really try to do this on, on all of our streets um, when we can. We look at this narrowing effect. So um, less pavement is less cost, less to maintain, less to plow, et cetera. So we, we do look at narrowing the roadways. Um, the benefit from a, a drivability standpoint is we want the drivers to feel a little more pinched and tight. And so um, rather than just me putting up signs, which may not be followed, um, changing the effect and the experience of the driver um, by making them feel more narrowed is, is, is the transportation engineering effect we're trying to create. Not only the narrowing, but we will look at doing centerline stripe with potentially a fog line stripe to emphasize those narrowed 11-foot lanes. Um, so that would provide a, a striping visual in addition to the um, curb and gutter narrowing as well. So we do recognize the speeding. We understand that um, we are restricted by the state aid money. We can't go any narrower than that um, to honor our parking um, ability and, and lane um, for that high of a volume.
Thank you, Your Honor. So just to follow up, hopefully not only do we see better quality roads on a, on a really important um, stretch of street, but also that may help um, reduce some of the speed issues that you might see on a regular basis. Um, so thank you for explaining that.
Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, Paul, regarding the speed, uh, greatly sympathize with you on that. Uh, in, in my years on the council, I've had the opportunity to work with some different groups and organizations about uh, traffic control, uh, speeding, so on and so forth. And I can tell you, just to summarize, that when the lanes are narrowed, it does slow the traffic down. So, you know, here's hoping uh, as far as that goes. Because I, I, you know, you look at 15th Street and it's just wide open. I, I totally sympathize with you there on that. Uh, I'm retired and I like to do 30 miles an hour, but uh, I get a lot of traffic that's right on my bumper trying to get me to move along. And it is frustrating uh, very much so. Uh, question for engineering, you, there's one slide that you had up there that talked about uh, the pedestrian traffic, the amount of, the amount of vehicles per day and things like that. It was there. Yeah, there we go. Uh, long time ago, seems like a thousand years, uh, the council had looked at uh, you, you know, some things in terms of mu- moving traffic back and forth. But I don't see anything here, which is what we had talked about many years ago, and that's bicycle traffic. Uh, is it expected that bicycle traffic will be using the street itself and not the sidewalks then?
Correct.
Okay. And with the narrowing, uh, we had talked about years ago, because 15th was so wide, we had talked about doing bike lanes, dedicated bike lanes. Uh, and uh, I'm, I'm sorry to see that we can't do them, but with the narrowing, I guess it's just not a possibility. But there are a lot of bikes, bike riders who do use 15th in addition to many of the other streets in town. Uh, and maybe a dumb question, I, I don't ride a bike anymore. I tried it about 10 years ago and it felt very dangerous at, at the time. So I don't do it anymore. But do we allow bicycles on sidewalks or do they have to use the street?
If I may first, um, and that I might defer to Dan. Um, but, but Joe, maybe first, if I could, I could just, um, I wouldn't say this doesn't preclude that decision in the future. Right now, we wanted to honor parking um, and, and, and give dedicated parking. If the community through study or, or vision decides to dedicate a bike lane, there'd be room to do that. We would just need to make a decision of where we want to eliminate parking and dedicate a bike lane. So I just, I just want to make that clarification.
That's, that's great. That's great. Uh, so in the future, we might have no parking on the south side and we've got bike lanes and, and things like that. So we do have the options out there in the future and I think that's great then, uh, to have that. Had we looked at uh, some diagonal parking around Pioneer Park to, uh, to help satisfy some of the supposed off-street parking? It, it, it would be on-street, but it would allow for uh, more parking as a result of that. Could we do something like that? I, we've done it for churches in the past. A couple of churches right in my neighborhood uh, have that and it's worked very well. So I'm just wondering, have we looked at that as a possibility?
We did. We, we worked, we worked with the operations committee on a couple of options there. Um, but when we dug into it, uh, there, there's some mature trees along the south side of 15th Street along Pioneer Park. Um, to keep the alignment of the roadway and provide some bump-out angle parking, we started to impact those trees significantly was our first concern. And then just with the 6,500 vehicles per day backing up into that roadway, talking to our, our, our safety departments, we had a concern with that as well. So kind of ruled those two out with our operations committee of good idea, good thought. Uh, we tried it, but we felt that this wasn't the appropriate location for it.
Yeah, it, and I was on the operations committee for 10 years. I'm not on it anymore. And I miss it very much so. But I'm glad that you did take a look at that uh, to see what the options might have been and, and are not available. Thank you, Your Honor.
Councilmember Brooks.
Thank you. Um, I just have a question about crosswalks. Are any of the crosswalks changing or are they gonna remain as they are?
The crosswalks will essentially remain as they are. Um, I, the, you know, Pine is kind of a, an obvious one that'll remain.
Spring Street?
Spr- Spring Street, um, I'm just, I'm trying to recall. We haven't, we haven't finalized our striping plan. That's something that-
The only reason I ask is I drive through there and I know there's quite a few um, kids that cross through there to get to the side entrance to the middle school. Cause I go that way to drop off my kids and I do see quite a few people using that crosswalk in the morning, around 7, 7:30 in the morning. So I just want to know if, if that would be at all impacted, because I do see people using it quite frequently. I'll answer that later, not right now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Foltch.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have to echo the concerns about pedestrian safety around Pioneer Park, um, Pine Street and, and 15th. You know, I just, I think it's a really bad idea to narrow the width of the roadway from, um, from Pioneer Street down to the end of the park to the, to the church. Because if you go through there when there's a ballgame going on and you have, you have uh, vehicles that are parked on what would be the south side of the street along the park, you know, with people getting in and out of their cars and, and it's kids getting in and out of the cars and such, I just think that, that's trouble because it's already tight. I'm, and I've gone to events, like when, I don't know if they still have the fireworks and I'm assuming people still go to the, go to Pioneer for um, fireworks for, over the 4th and for Rivertown Days and such. And, and I always just thought that that was also a really bad time because you for sure see people on both sides of the street that are parked at that time. And it was already tight when people are opening up their car doors and such. And so I don't, I think it would be a benefit to 15th Street to narrow the roadway to help slow down um, traffic for the rest of, of all of 15th Street. But just in particular around the park there, I just think it's a bad idea. If we're not gonna accommodate, you know, to have, as Joe was suggesting, you know, parallel parking, to narrow that roadway through there is only gonna make parking even worse. And it's already really tight. And so I would appreciate it if you would reconsider not narrowing the street in that area. I just don't think it's a good idea. And then also, um, the, and marking the crosswalks because I drove my kids every day for five years to the middle school and I would go through that intersection of 15th and Pine. And there's always kids coming through, like Lori was saying. And, and it's just really poorly marked in that area. And it's, I mean, there's oodles of kids coming in and out um, on bikes, you know, as well. And I'm glad to see that you're improving the sidewalks because those, when you're walking those sidewalks, they're pretty crummy. And I see kids all the time biking on those sidewalks. And so I think that that was really good. Um, just to reconsider around the, the park. Thanks.
Okay, counsel.
And then my last concern was, um, Ryan, you had said that you have no intentions of removing any of the existing trees anywhere within this um, project. And so I know that some of the ash trees are beginning to die. I know for sure I saw one across from the Methodist Church on the north side. It was along one of those blocks in there. It was on the res- you know, within a, a residential home. And so, uh, have you given any thought as to what you're gonna do when you come across the dead trees that are in the right-of-way or which are about to succumb to emerald ash bor? Because they're there, they're present. If you pay attention and you look, you can see them. They're there. And so I've brought this up and have had conversations with Nick in the past about considering what to do with the ash trees. Um, because they're gonna start to die in large amounts in the next five years. Thanks.
And on, on that point, Councilmember Foltch, we will, um, I think our city foresters started a couple of weeks ago?
Yep.
Or so, our new city forester. So um, our intention as with the past city forester is to go through and look at the health of trees and understand if we need to um, include some for that purpose, um, based on health or liability or concerns. Um, so the, engineering doesn't handle that part of it, but we do always team up and do a, a, a drive-through when the weather's turns and, and identify those kind of issues. So we'll, we'll keep that on our consistent to-do list and, and get that addressed.
Okay. Counsel, any other discussion? Okay. With that, I would accept a motion to adopt resolution ordering the improvements, approving the plans and authorizing the advertisement for bids for Project 2020 and 21, the 2020 Neighborhood Infrastructure Improvements. Councilmember Vaughn, Councilmember Brooks.
Could you just announce that that requires a six vote?
And that does now, uh, require a six vote of the council. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now we have a public hearing proposed ordinance amendment. I'll defer to our city attorney, Dan Fleagle.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. You're asked tonight to hold a public hearing and conduct a second reading of the proposed T-21 ordinance amendment. Uh, that primarily changes the uh, sale age for tobacco products in the city to age 21. Uh, I do ask that you take two actions here. One would be to presume, presumably approve the ordinance. And then because this would be a fairly lengthy publication, we would ask for approval to have a summary publication of the ordinance that'll just reduce some expense to the city. That second action would require six votes to approve. Uh, basically, the city in different facets has been discussing this since about 2018. Uh, we've got significant help from the Public Health Law Center at Hamlin, uh, Mitchell-Hamlin Law School. And they've contributed mostly to the drafting of the ordinance. Uh, the ordinance, most importantly, defines licensed products as what can be sold under the, the tobacco license. And it's a very broad definition. Uh, as I mentioned, it, it increases the sale age to 21. It does remove what's been referred to during the process as the PUP regulations for the possession or purchase or use uh, by persons under age 21. This ordinance does not provide criminal penalties for that anymore. Uh, there are still some state laws that could apply there. Uh, does require signage to be put into establishments on age for signage. That is one small change that has come about since the first reading. Uh, the draft last time did uh, provide that the city would provide the signage in talking with staff. That may be not very workable. So uh, the signage requirement remains, but not that the city would provide the signs themselves. Uh, basically, there would not be any significant financial impact for the change. Uh, essentially, the council again is asked to hold the public hearing and I can stand for any questions.
At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to speak to that, you could stand to the podium and-
Well, good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Alexis Bylander and I'm here on behalf of Clearway Minnesota, a statewide nonprofit organization dedicated to reducing tobacco's harm. I also represent Minnesotans for a Smoke-Free Generation, a coalition with over 60 member organizations, including several here tonight, um, including the Association for Nonsmokers Minnesota, the Minnesota Chapters of the American Cancer Society, American Lung Association, and American Heart Association, along with Alina and many others that all share the goal of passing bold tobacco prevention policies. We support Tobacco 21 because of the strong role it plays in preventing youth tobacco use. The passage of the federal tobacco bill was a huge step, raising the tobacco age across the country. But as you know, we must adopt Tobacco 21 here in Minnesota as well. A local Tobacco 21 ordinance in Hastings will provide much-needed clarity for tobacco retailers and local law enforcement. Currently, federal law sets the tobacco age at 21, but can only be enforced by the FDA. Passing a local policy will allow local officials to enforce the new age as well. I recently heard the following anecdote and thought it illustrated the situation well. It's like if someone was driving 100 miles an hour down the road, but only federal law enforcement officials could pull them over and ticket. Well, we need state troopers and local police to be able to enforce our speeding limits too. And it's the same with the new tobacco age. We need all levels of government working on compliance and enforcement. An immediate action to strengthen the newly passed federal law is needed to prevent tobacco addiction among youth. For the first time in nearly two decades, youth tobacco use has increased in Minnesota. Last year's Minnesota Student Survey found 1 in 4 11th graders regularly use e-cigarettes. And the rate of 8th grade vaping has nearly doubled since 2016. The U.S. Surgeon General calls youth nicotine addiction a national epidemic and has urged lawmakers at all levels to protect kids. Raising the tobacco age to 21 has been something advocates across Minnesota have been working on for years because we know that the vast majority, around 95% of smokers started smoking before they turned 21. We want you to know that our statewide coalition was working hard to pass a tobacco, a statewide Tobacco 21 policy at the legislature, legislature this session, and we're making good progress. However, there are no guarantees that it will pass this year and we cannot wait to protect our kids. On behalf of the 60 organizations, I represent that support Tobacco 21 and enforcement of the law at all levels of government. Thank you for your bold action tonight. And I also want to mention our coalition would be happy to provide signage if the city doesn't want to. We can provide those to retailers. Thank you.
Good evening. Um, first, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you about the important issue of Tobacco 21 and the health of our youth and our community. My name is Gail Konzimias. Um, I'm a lifelong resident of Hastings and my children are the fifth generation to live in this community. We still have a teenager in our household. So um, I, I'm invested in the health of our community. I'm also a nurse practitioner and I work in college health. Uh, the bulk of my population ranges between the ages of 18 and 22. So I have had a bird's eye view of the evolution of nicotine use in the youth and young adults. 10 years ago, when I asked about nicotine use, rarely did I find a smoker. Terms like disgusting and gross were used to describe cigarette smoking. Now with the evolution of the e-cigarette, the numbers have dramatically increased. Um, the new devices, as you know, are colorful and fun and cool. They're shared and they're used frequently. Apparently, there's a new disposable device out called a puff bar and it comes in flavors like pink lemonade and blue razz. Big industry is targeting our youth and we need to do something about it. Um, I am now helping young adults quit smoking, which was something I never had to do in the past. Data has shown that if we decrease- Data has shown that if we decrease access to eighteen-year-olds, um, we decrease the use in fifteen-year-olds by twenty-five percent. In speaking with my niece, who is a student at Hastings Middle School, she says it is not uncommon for high schoolers to come down and, um, come over, I guess, whatever direction, and, um, and sell e-cigarette products to middle school students. I've been asking my college-age patients about flavors, and that is how many of them became hooked on nicotine in high school. We know that nicotine is harmful to the development of the adolescent brain. Early nicotine use increases the risk of addiction, lifelong addiction to nicotine and other harmful products. We have the opportunity, you have the opportunity to make a difference. I want to ask you to please make the health of the youth in our community a pri- priority and support Tobacco 21. Thanks for listening.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Mary Nearing. I am a resident of Hastings. I wasn't planning on this tonight, but this is, I want to kind of put a face on the other end of the, the product line. I was diagnosed with cancer nine years ago. Lung cancer due to smoking during my college time. I had quit for thirty years, but I still re- developed lung cancer. Unfortunately, it's been nine years and I'm cancer-free. Unfortunately, my husband, who has also been a smoker for over fifty years, was diagnosed in October with stage three can- lung cancer also. So these are two people who have opposite courses through their lives, but both of us started when we were in high school. So we were teenagers when we started smoking. I quit. Unfortunately, my husband never did, and we both ended up at this, at the end, near the end of our lives with lung cancer. So this is why it's so important for us to prevent teenagers to start smoking, because if you, obviously, if you don't start, you don't develop the lifelong possibilities. Obviously, you can get lung cancer from other things and secondhand smoke. There's all sorts of ideas. However, if you don't smoke, you are much less likely to have chronic problems beyond. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. My name is Anna Grace Hodinger, and I'm sixteen years old. I'm here to thank you for considering raising the tobacco age to 21 in Hastings. Although I'm not a high school student in your community, I can speak for many high schoolers. And as a high school student, I am in clubs, sports, and extracurricular activities with eighteen-year-olds. They're my friends and my peers. I can see how easily it is for younger students to get tobacco products for those, from those who can legally buy it. When I was in seventh grade, I started high school sports, and all of my friends were seniors in high school. That's how easy it is to access these. Many older students buy tobacco products at gas stations, convenience stores, and vape shops, and they sell it to younger kids at school or through social media like Instagram and Snapchat. It's much easier to get in contact with an eighteen-year-old classmate than a twenty-one-year-old classmate. Like, I don't know if you guys know any twenty-one-year-olds in high school. I'm watching my peers becoming addicted to nicotine because vapes are so easy to get. Raising the sales age to 21 takes away the connection between eighteen-year-old high school students who are buying them and selling them to younger kids. This ordinance is extremely important and is a step in the right direction to help keep my friends from becoming addicted to back, to tobacco products and staying healthy. As someone who has siblings who are all addicted to nicotine and they're vaping, I stand boldly for this ordinance for your community and your students. Thank you for your leadership and support in this ordinance.
Thank you. Any other comments? This time, I will close the public hearing. Council discussion. Councilmember Brox?
So I'm not the chair of the committee who's been looking at this issue, but since Lisa is not here tonight, I think I can just speak to it a little bit, since I was on the committee. Um, our journey through evaluating this possible ordinance has taken some time, and I think we all, um, have had a really eye-opening, um, set of education about vaping as an issue in our community. Uh, it's something that the high, my friends who are high school teachers have been talking to me about for a long time. It's not a new issue. It's not recent. Within the past couple of years, it's been going on in the high schools for a long time. Um, and I think that we're just catching up with, um, the evidence is starting to show how, how disastrous this is for young people. Not only the addiction, but some deaths because of, um, combining vaping with other, um, materials. So we had a lot of opportunities to hear from different organizations that came and provided us, um, jewel and different things to show us what they were, which I had never seen before, which I'm thankful for, but my son is just in middle school. So I'm thankful that I haven't seen any of those in my house yet, but I have plenty of friends who have talked to me about dealing with this issue with their kids, how, um, painful it is for them. And as a mother, I think that, um, it was just very eye-opening to get an education on what this means in our community and to our youth. And it really is predatory, in my opinion, in the way that it's being advertised and the commer- you know, how it's being targeted. We have discussed this at length, and I think the only thing that we got a little hung up on in the process is just the issue of federalism. Which branch of government is appropriate in this situation to make this law? And I think we struggled with that a little bit, and while we were struggling through that topic, the federal law was passed. So we were fortunate to have that, um, federal law come through kind of unexpectedly. But I agree that there's still room for the state and, um, the city of Hastings to conform our, all of our laws to the language of the federal law, which is what we're attempting to do, is to bring ours, our ordinances and our descriptions into alignment with the federal law. Um, something we also talked about was just the, um, the PUP penalties that penalizing underage users hasn't really shown to be effective in reducing their tobacco usage. So we did take some of that language out of the ordinance, which, uh, Attorney Fleagle, uh, referenced, but there was a specific reason why we did that. Um, so I think that, um, all in all, I'm really happy with what we've produced. I'm really happy with this draft ordinance. I've been the recipient of many emails this week supporting the legislation, which I appreciate, um, from our community and from health organizations and people that are part of the Hastings community. It's really helpful when you speak out on these kind of issues to provide additional information and evidence about what we already know we should do in this case, I think. Um, and I can only speak for myself, I guess, in that. But it was, it's really been an education for me about what, what exactly, like how vaping is impacting kids. And this is something that I hope my kids don't have to deal with, because I hope that, um, passing this will mean that there won't be access, um, for kids anymore. And I'm, I'm looking forward to, um, voting in favor of it, and I appreciate the whole Public Safety Committee, all the work that we've done. I know that it took a long time, but I think we, we went very deliberately through this issue and tried to look at it from every angle. We talked to the school district, we talked to Tobacco Free Alliance. We had a lot of, um, information that we were gathering, so I hope that what we've put on the table in front of you is thoughtful, and I think that it is. Um, and in collaboration with a lot of different partners, like the, um, Public Health Law Center, the draft language came from them. And so I just really appreciate the number of people that were involved in this process, because it was a lot of different people, in addition to Public Safety Committee of the council, that have worked together to get this draft ordinance in front of you. Thank you.
Councilmember Balsanik?
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I'm very proud. I, I, I don't like to do this that often, but I'm very proud that I was the one that brought this all up two years ago. Two years ago.
Yes.
Yes. Uh, and ironically, those of you in the audience may not know, but I am a smoker. And I brought it up for all of the reasons that you mentioned tonight, uh, that Councilmember Brox summarized so beautifully. And, uh, uh, it, it is something that is a terrible, terrible habit. It's an illness, it's whatever you want to call it, but it's very difficult to, to stop it. I stopped for seven years one time, I stopped for two years one time, I stopped for six months, you know, through, through my whole life. I, I stopped it awful lot and still kept coming back to it again. And, uh, my grandchildren are probably my biggest critic on, uh, trying to stop from doing this. Uh, bless their hearts. Uh, this is, I hope, something that has a good impact on our next generation, if not everybody who's smoking right now. And in, in my comments, and, and as Councilmember Brox said, we had layers of different ways of looking at this. We had to look at what other communities were doing, and if we had this law, what would it mean to somebody from Lakeville who was coming in here and, uh, smoking, and, and vice versa, and so forth. Uh, it was not an easy task to, uh, uh, to accomplish. But what I want to say is we have a legislature that is in session right now. And I, I really implore all of you who are here tonight, uh, speaking against, or speaking for this ordinance, to turn your attention now to the state legislature and find out why in the blazes they have not passed this yet. It was before them last year, it died. We had our legislative representatives come here, and they summarized what happened at the last session, and I asked each one of them directly, why did this not pass? I got bureaucratic answers from them. Uh, I think what it boils down to is there's a tax on tobacco, and, uh, there's a, there's an element in the legislature that is more concerned about collecting money for the state than they are about what is good for the state. And when you stop and look at what it costs the state to take care of those that are ill from smoking, it, it, it just doesn't make any sense to look at it from a monetary standpoint. If we take away the smoking rights of eighteen to, you know, to twenty-one-year-olds, we're gonna lose this much income. And so the lobbyists went out on this. Terrible tragedy that, that the legislature has not done anything about this. Uh, and so I hope that you turn your attention to them, as I intend to, to keep their feet to the fire, and get this thing passed once and for all, so that, uh, we, we can save some lives, we can save the state some money in terms of what it costs to care for these people who get sick as a result of it, uh, and create a, a, a much healthier environment statewide. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Councilmember Foltz?
Thank you, Your Honor. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Brox, for giving such, uh, well-worded summary of the events that have taken place over the last year to year and a half, uh, since we, as the Public Safety Committee, started looking at that. Um, I'd also like to thank the members of the Public Safety Commission, who also looked, um, into this matter and made recommendations to the council and provided feedback. And to all those who have been supportive along this way, Elise Les of Minnesota Tobacco Free Alliance has been wonderful in supporting us with information, and representatives from the school district, uh, Principal Johnson and Superintendent Collins, um, also participated in our conversations so that we understood the true impact of what was going on in our high schools. And so, um, yes, the federal government has made this so easy for us, because, um, we're just actually updating our ordinance then, so that we're in compliance with, uh, federal regulations. We can't keep it at eighteen, we have to move it to twenty-one. It's, it's no longer like our decision to make. And so, uh, we have been so fortunate that the Public Health Law Center at Mitchell Hamlin School of Law has examined our city ordinances, and they have, uh, provided wonderful feedback, uh, to our attorney, uh, Dan Flugel, Flugel, who has, uh, taken that and incorporated into our city ordinances, so that we have a model ordinance. And, um, if we pass this tonight, we will be the fiftieth city in Minnesota to, uh, pass this ordinance, uh, bringing us into compliance with the federal law, and so, uh, kudos to us. And I, I'm also excited to see that we're lowering the penalty for minors under eighteen who, um, are caught smoking. I didn't realize this, that if you were caught smoking, it was a misdemeanor, and it would go on your actual record, on your criminal record. And so, um, no one wants to see, you know, kids having a ding on their record, so young in life with a, a misdemeanor on their, on the record. So we are eliminating that, and it'll be a petty mister, petty misdemeanor if it gets to the point where they actually do get a citation, so that doesn't go on their record. So, um, so thanks to everyone who's been a part of this, and, um, and I can't believe I'm gonna say this, but thank you, President Trump, for actually signing this into law as well. So, um, that's enough for now. Thanks. Bye.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Noting the second reading of the ordinance, council, I would accept a motion to adopt an ordinance of the city of Hastings, amending City Code Chapter 112, Tobacco Regulations. Okay? Do need six votes for this to pass, so...
No, actually, this, this is the ordinance approval. Uh, this would require only a simple majority.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay. Any other discussion, council? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion prevails. Thank you to all.
Your Honor, if you could also take up the second action, which is just to approve the summary, uh, of the ordinance that would be published, and that is what would require six votes. I know I am.
Okay. So I will accept a motion. Councilmember Vaughn? And Councilmember Lund? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Thank you all. We have a presentation tonight from our community developer, John Hinsman.
Thank you, Mayor and Mayor and City Councilmembers. I'll bring the presentation up here. As we've done the last few years, we put together an annual report of activities within the Community Development Department. I, uh, included a copy of that report within your packets. I'm gonna go through a brief summary here of, of some of the highlights and activities from 2019 and take a look at some of the projects that we anticipated to 2020 here. So recap of the department itself, uh, we take care of city planning, economic development, historic preservation activities, three members, myself, Justin Fortney, and Rusty Feifield. We're also served by commissions of volunteers, our planning commission, seven members appointed by the city council. They review land use applications, plat, site plans, special use permits, and the like. During 2019, we took a look at, uh, at thirty-six different applications. So this is a, a body that's very important to the city council, making recommendations on a lot of land use activities that take place. We also have our HEDRA, our Hastings Economic Development and Redevelopment Authority, which is five citizen members, along with councilmembers Balsanik and Vaughn, who sit on that commissioner authority as well. We're involved in economic development matters, property sale and development, loan programs, and then our planning for housing and economic development. And then finally, we have our Heritage Preservation Commission, made up of nine members, uh, in charge of the areas you see here. We have sixty-three national registered properties. They reviewed nineteen permits last year. They do our recognition awards, and they also instituted the Century Home Plaques Program this year, which is another great way of, of recognizing the history that we have here in the city. So let's look at some of the activities we had last year. The Confluence has been a project we've been working on for many years, as you know. Reuse of the Hudson Manufacturing Facility. In 2019, we finished the, the parking ramp, got a hotel operator involved. The park is under development, will be finished up in the spring. Environmental remediation is weeks away at this point. So our costs within that building are coming to a close, which is great. Uh, the developer has started their interior renovation of the building, so that it'll be transformed into the project we've been waiting for, for some time, which will be a hotel, apartments, banquet facility, restaurant, and some other retail facilities within the site. In new business, we, uh, had, had a number of new businesses that came and expanded throughout the city, just, uh, a, a... just a handful of them here, Prime Chiropractic, Board of Nutrition, Hastings Public House, The Social Tavern. These are projects that came forward and were hit on by different various commissions in their approvals. Housing has been a big topic of conversation for us as well. Within 2019, we did see the construction of Voyager Estates, which is eighty-eight new apartment units, and the construction beginning of Vermillion Shores, another sixty. So we've been seeing good apartment construction go on right now. We also have the construction of fourteen single-family homes and fourteen manufactured homes. I'll get into that in just a little moment here. We're also looking at planned housing. Just in the, since January of this year, we've seen a couple of projects come forward. We recently approved a ninety-unit senior housing development at Schoolhouse Square, and an annexation for another hundred and twenty units on the west end of the city, which are bringing more single-family and townhome villa-type housing. We went through some planning initiatives last year with our comprehensive plan, strategic plan for economic development, did some updates to our website. We also secured about fifty thousand dollars' worth of new grants for a property utilization study, which we're undertaking as we speak, and a people movement plan that we're working on with the Parks Department. Our HEDRA also has a loan program, so in 2019, we did loan forty-six thousand dollars out for five new projects. These are some of the projects that we had funds go to that year. These represent, right now, about four hundred and eighteen thousand dollars with the twenty-six loans we have outstanding that have helped make Hastings the way it is today, which is to be able to take the historic fabric of the city and be able to provide more for business investment. We've been spending a lot of time on housing and demographics. This is kind of a chart here showing population projections as we move forward here. We've got our population presently at about twenty-three thousand, and looking at a growth over the next twenty years to almost twenty-nine thousand. The people per household will diminish over time, and that's nothing unique to Hastings. That's a trend that we've seen throughout Minnesota and the nation, in that, right now, we've got a population per household of two-point-four, will go down to about two-point-three. So it means even though we have the same housing stock here, the number of people living in there diminishes, and that has effects on other agencies, school districts, et cetera. Our employment per Hastings here, kind of an oddity here with a little step down and step back up here between eighteen and twenty. I'm more concerned with the forecast moving forward from twenty to forty, which shows a modest growth in that, and that's something that we'll be exploring into the future to see if something that we might be able to get more people in the working environment in Hastings. Our construction activity last year, we had about ten million dollars' worth of new value of housing built, a little bit below last year. Total of about eighty-eight permits altogether for new residential. Commercial permits, a little below last year as well in number, but the valuation was much higher, at about eighteen-six. Some of our other administrative permits were up a little bit. So we're seeing from eighteen to nineteen, and what we're looking at are a trend overall. When you look back over the last fifteen years or so, we had our peak in 2003, declined down into the recession, and then, you know, some growth coming back as we move forward here. What these colors represent here, the orange is single-family, the red, the blue is apartment. So you can see that apartment construction has comprised much of our growth over the last couple of years. When we look forward to what we have on the horizon here with the annexation and a hundred and twenty new lots coming in on that one, we hope that the inventory goes up here to provide more opportunities for our single-family totals to rise more than the ten to twenty we've seen annually over the last few years. So when we look ahead to next year, we're going to be, we're going to be putting, finalizing the comprehensive plan, that's pretty much done now, but we'll be putting, making zoning changes and other things consistent with it. We'll be going through assessment of housing needs as we've started in the last year, look at a growth in housing, we'll look at the opening of the Confluence and its effects that it will have on other development within the area. Highway sixty-one revisited with our, with the Vermillion Street corridor plan, and future construction plans coming through for MNDOT over the next few years, continue to work on that, as well as the empty Target Building. So that's a summary of what I have for 2019, and I can stand for any questions.
Thank you, John. Councilmember Balsanik.
Thank you, Your Honor. John, looking at the residential permits, single-family, townhome, multifamily, manufactured home, are those considered mobile homes, or are they pre-built houses that are put on a foundation?
Councilmember, those would be prefabricated homes. This is primarily in the Three Rivers Mobile Home Park. There was a growth in permits last year there.
Okay. So eighteen, or, I'm sorry, six in 2018, fourteen last year. What is their capacity over there?
Councilmember, they probably have another, I'm guessing, maybe twenty more altogether.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion, council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Okay. We have the COPS grant, and Dan Watich will speak to us on that.
We introduced this meeting, or a couple of meetings ago. This is a federal program through the Department of Justice, COPS standing for community-oriented policing. Essentially, what it comes down to is if the city could envision hiring a new police officer, particularly with an emphasis on community-oriented policing, in the next, say, two to four years, this is a great program. It would pay for seventy-five percent of the entry-level wages and benefits for a new officer for up to three years and up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars total. Obviously, uniforms, equipment, there's some other expenses involved, obviously twenty-five percent match from the city. To be honest, at the hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar maximum grant, it probably runs out after about two years, not three years. But if we might envision hiring a new officer in the near future, nice to have that expense paid for by the federal government. In the request for the 2020 budget, Chief Schaefer had requested a couple of additional officers, one being quite right in line with what this is, that was not funded, and expect that he would be making that request again in the coming budget. This was referred to the Public Safety Committee of Council. They had a good discussion with Chief, as well as Commander Showalter, about how this might be used in the community, and their recommendation was to go forward with it. Because it's coming out of committee, as well as recognizing it has this ongoing budget impact, sort of a commitment to hiring a new officer, felt it was appropriate to bring back to council rather than just going straight to the grant application. With that, if there's any questions or clarification?
Council discussion, Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thanks, Dan, for the recap. I read the minutes and notes, and I'm a little cautious always of grants, because I've seen it in other places where it kind of gets that ship, just like what it's saying, it'll get you so far, but then you're going to have to pick it up after that. And I agree that this is a great opportunity if we are looking at that. I noticed that we went back to the Public Safety Committee of Council to address this and get the questions answered. I appreciate that, and I think most grants are going to come in the public safety sector. Maybe someday it might come in a different division. So I'm requesting that if we continue to use grant funding, that this goes to a committee, I don't know which committee, and I'll, the furthest to later, that that committee needs to keep an eye on this, because I put an asterisk by this hire, because what happens three years from now when we're in, well, let's say somebody retires out currently, administration has the authority, because it's an FTE, we have so many FTEs, and they just go out and post that job, and we fill it again. I think that these grant ones have to be asterisks, saying, can we continue to fund this long-term? When can we get our budget finance team to say, are we, do we have enough funds to continue this funding? Or maybe we don't get to replace that replacement retiree or whatever it is. I just, I'm a little cautious of grants, because what's the long-term effect that we're going to have to deal with? And it may not be us, it might be the next council that's saying, we're raising up our cost on taxpayers through the grant process. And I just want to make sure that we keep an eye and ear on it, that we just don't go ahead and approve it because it's an FTE. This one, any grant should have an asterisk next to it. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Brock.
Thank you for that point, Councilmember Vaughn, and we did talk about that. That was my primary question, is when we hire this position and we pay for it with grant funds, what happens in year three or year four? And we also talked about the fact that we, when we have additional needs in our resources, it seems that sometimes the only answer, I said on the Finance Committee, as well as Public Safety, so in my experience, sometimes the answer to, we have this new problem, is always to put a person at that. And so we did talk about this a little bit, and since I was on the Finance Committee last year, I know that Chief Schaefer's proposal had three officers in it, we gave him one, and that basically got them up to where they needed to be staff-wise. But we haven't, definitely haven't added what I would consider to be excessive staff or staffed up beyond what our needs require. We did look at some things in the committee meeting, like ratios, so how many residents per officer is recommended. That number can fluctuate depending on what department you are, where you're located. We probably don't, you know, I don't know, there's a lot involved in it that I, that I, that we did look at that. But I think that we acknowledge that because this position is something that the police department wants to do anyway, and this grant is available, I think the commitment is that we get the position, if the grant is received, for the amount of time that that grant is applicable. And I agree with you, there should be an evaluation towards the end of the grant, especially by the Finance Committee, to say, if we're going to keep this person on, you know, what else is going to, what are we going to give up? Because we can't have an ever-expanding budget that anytime we have any need, a new staff person is needed. So we did talk about that, and I think that I share your concern from a financial perspective, because we have to be concerned about the budget as a whole, and if we keep expanding Public Safety, which we know we need, it's a core service that the city needs to provide, but if that piece of the puzzle keeps always expanding, we have to remove something else. So we have to manage it, and I agree with you wholeheartedly, that we need to keep an eye on it, make sure that we're not just adding staff. But I feel like this is a responsible ask, and so that's why I support it.
Councilmember Fults.
Thank you, Your Honor. In addition to what Councilmember Brock had said, something else that I really take to heart is that this is something that we can do that's proactive within our community to make a difference. And I hope that if we, it is a competitive grant, so it's not a for-sure-done deal by any means, but if we are awarded the grant, that we do really measure success and look at what the impact is within our community, because the chief had shared with us some historical information, like, oh, is it the last ten years? And then how there's an increase in crime and drug use within our community over the last few years? And so he's made proposals during our last financial cycle about wanting to add a staff person who would be more proactive in getting out there in the community and helping with intervention and such. And so this is in exactly the same position, but it's the same type of work, where we'll have an officer out there in the community who will be proactive within neighborhoods and doing problem identification and working on partnerships. Hopefully, we'll start to see more neighborhood watch groups, people being organized within their own community to help keep an eye on crime as it's occurring. And so I think only good things will come from this position, and I get excited about, I get excited about it because I truly believe that it'll make a big difference, it'll save lives, and it'll, you know, lower all sorts of, even small crimes that are occurring within our community.
Councilmember Brock.
So I won't say too much more, because I know the, we've already said a lot, but I think the last thing to keep in mind is that as we see the housing expand, which we're going to see addition of more single-family housing, hopefully townhome housing, multifamily housing, additional people, you know, give the possibility that we need more officers. So I think we're also thinking about the future, in that as we have more opportunities for people to come to Hastings and be part of our community, it's possible that we would need more officers in the future. So that's not this right now, but as we add this housing and we see that need develop, then we can keep an eye on it, like you were saying, use fact-based information to decide, do we need this officer, do we need to continue to use this officer? It's pretty hard, though, to take an officer away once you give one, so I definitely understand your hesitation, because I think that that's a hard move to make. So I don't want to put us in a corner, but I, as I said before, I think this is a responsible decision.
Councilmember Lund.
Just a point of clarification. So if we vote on this and it goes forward, do we then, and we're awarded the grants, or is, does it come back in front of us? Or how does that work? Or is that up to the discretion of the chief to then post and hire? Just curious on process for this.
I'm getting a whisper over here that we typically bring acceptance of grants back to the council.
Thank you. So at that point, we could have this conversation, too, of putting in some of those asterisks that you mentioned, just so that we're...
Councilmember Fults.
Thank you, Your Honor. We did have some conversation about this and how, and I don't know what the follow-through was, who was going to do it, but if we, if we do authorize for them to apply for the grant, that we also are agreeing that we would accept the grant and move forward, because the federal government doesn't really favor when they go through the process of doing the awards, and then they want to give it to a city, and the city's like, eh, we're just kidding. It's like, no, they don't want that. And so they, I think that was something that we were, we were talking about at the end of, Councilmember Brock, correct me if I'm wrong, but how, if we do make a motion to accept, moving ahead with the grant process, that we would also accept the grant, if it was so awarded.
Just to clarify, I wasn't saying that we wouldn't accept the grant, I'm just saying that this conversation would be, may be even more relevant at that point in time, as we accept the grant.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor, and I think, I think that's what I was hoping for. We had the conversation, we should, we should apply for the grant and then hire. I don't think administration should have to bring this back in front of us. I think we had this conversation. I'm worried about two years from now, that's what I'm worried about. So if we're all okay with it, I'm ready to make a motion that we authorize the Hastings Police Department to submit the COPS grant application, and then if they are successful, just authorize a hire.
All right. Any other council discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Kristy, thank you for hanging out with us for the evening. Kristy's going to give a Chamber of Commerce presentation. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to try not to be offended that the packed chambers was not here for my presentation, so I know it's late and I will be brief. I do, yeah, sorry. This is a fancy new system.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. What do I, can I do this?
Nope. Should be able to. Yep, having one of those, and I'm sure it'll pop up for you.
Oh, it is. All right. Multiple options here. Here we go. Okay. Thank you again for having me tonight. You have in your packet the 2019 and 2020 tourism marketing plan along with the budget, so I will just quickly go over this past year, which led to this current year's marketing plan, and then stand for any questions. So what we'll go over tonight is just kind of what the staff from the tourism side has done behind the seat, and... done behind the seat and, behind the scene in leading Hastings tourism efforts. We'll recap on the marketing plan from the past year, and then I'll also just briefly talk about why Rivertown Days is important to the Tourism Bureau. So what we've been working on behind the scenes, so a, a big part of what the tourism staff does is to carry out the marketing plan that is set in place by the Hastings Tourism Board. So we work on ads and content for over 12 publications. We maintain and distribute the Hastings Tourism Guide, which is updated annually. And when I say distribute, we distribute it to Highway Information Centers and Tourism Centers that are outside of our 50-mile radius. We work with about 30 of those. And then we also keep half of them locally so that our tourism-based businesses can distribute them as well. And then we manage our Visit Hastings website and then the social media outlets. We work closely with Explore Minnesota, our state tourism bureau, and some of the programs that we took advantage in this past year is we were able to get the Explore Minnesota Only in MN sign at Rivertown Days. We work on online listings, not only for our annual events that we have here in Hastings, but we work with some of our community partners, like the Downtown Business Association, and we, as a Tourism Bureau, are able to maintain their online presence through the Explore Minnesota website. And then we do continued education with them. A big thing that we implemented this past year is the Chamber Board approved hiring a tourism marketing lead. So in the past, we had a marketing coordinator that worked on both chamber and tourism efforts. And with the upcoming Confluence Development and New Hotel, we are going to have more opportunity to submit bids for larger projects that we haven't had the opportunity to do in the past. So the Chamber felt that it was time to hire a tourism marketing lead, that he's, they're not full-time, as you can see in the budget, we couldn't hire someone full-time, but we did get the 20 hours plus 10 hours of flex time. And so, Dave Youngren was hired in May, and he's getting acclimated with the role, and hopefully by the time the Confluence Development is up and running, we'll be able to really start going after some of those larger bids that we haven't been able to in the past. And then, part of our role is also managing a Tourism Board of Advisors, which includes members of the tourism-based businesses, and then also a couple of members of city staff. So Chris Jenkins and Lee Stoffel serves on that Tourism Board of Advisors, as well as Councilmember Lund. So just a quick recap of our marketing focus this past year. We really stepped away from some of those larger publications that we had been doing in the past, and we said, let's get the best bang for our buck and focus on the niche markets. So based on our 2018 Hastings Tourism Assessment Report that we did with the U of M, Natural Resources came at the top of the list as our tourism asset. So we really took a focus into our active lifestyle publications. You can see a list of those there. And then we focused on some online targeted ads specific to our Hastings bike trails. We also focused on the cultural and heritage tourism. We had an opportunity to partner with a, oops, excuse me, an opportunity to partner with Dakota County Historical Society on updating our downtown historic walking tour. The plan for that, and this was in last year's budget, was to create a walking tour map. It took a little while to get the content finalized. So as we assessed the use of apps, and I talked to some of my other peers in the tourism industry, we decided that with moving towards a new tourism website, we would just integrate a interactive walking tour map into that new west website as opposed to creating a new map. So that's going to be in this upcoming budget. And then we also focused on multi-generational, multi-generational travel. A lot of our assets appeal to multi-generations, so we focused on those families that are traveling with kids, grandkids, and then grandparents. So there's family activities, and then you can also go golfing, and then mom and mother-in-law can go out to the wine. We created those packages so that it would cater to the multi-generation travel. And just very briefly, I always like to bring up Rivertown Days. A main reason why the Chamber continues to, to host and sponsor Rivertown Days is because we do see the economic impact that it has on our community. And a couple of years ago, we were able to really utilize the improvements that happened in Levy Park and bring all of that action to the downtown area so that we can have everything on the river. And this past year, a big one for us was getting the fireworks over the river. Hopefully, you were able to enjoy those. But I just, I like to bring this up because it is, it does have a good economic impact for us, and, and that's why the Chamber and the Tourism Bureau continues to, to run it and, and take it over, even though it is, it is quite a task. Okay. So the 2019-2020 plan is not much different from what we had last year. We're going to continue to focus on our niche market with the active lifestyle tourism, cultural heritage tourism. We're also focusing on the multi-generational travel. And then, something new is we're really pushing for the visiting friends and family market. So reminding our Hastings residents what Hastings has to offer to their friends and family that may want to come for a week or, or for a weekend. And so, one of the, one of the new items in the budget is we did invest to promote the Visit Hastings website on the electronic sign in front of Walgreens, just to continue to remind our residents what is out there. We're going to continue to strengthen our online presence and social media. So we're moving from one major targeted online campaign to three, which will focus on our trails, and then we're just wrapping up our winter campaign, which really focused on our ski hills. The campaign slogan that we're using this year is "Get Away to Someplace Close," which is kind of going along with that theme for visiting friends and family, reminding people that we're really not that far away. And that's been easy for us to use in the Twin Cities market when we are boosting some of our social media posts. We are also creating a new tourism website. Our, even though our website is not that old, we found, or Dave found, that it's a bit restrictive to some of the things we wanted to do, including the historic walking tour map. And I think there's plans to do a public walk, or a public art map too. So we are going to be investing in a new platform so that we're able to, to, to launch some of those cool new things. And then with the addition of Dave, we're able to get involved in some more partnership opportunities. I did join the Steering Committee for the Hastings People Moving People Plan, which is with Chris Jenkins and then also Rusty Feifeld. And it's really taking a close look at some of the gaps in our trail system. And then it will also be assessing the need for additional wayfinding signs. So some of the feedback that we receive from, from our visitors, I think will be really helpful as that plan unfolds. And then, there's also some new opportunities to partner with some of our neighboring tourism bureaus. So the Prescott Chamber is really interested in hosting a biking event that will showcase our Point Douglas Trail that opened up last year. So Dave has been working closely with them on that. And then the Inver Grove Heights Chamber is interested in doing an event once the completion of the, I, the Mississippi River Trail out in Spring Lake Park. Once that's completed, there'll be an opportunity to partner on an event for that as well. That is all I have, and I'll answer any questions if there, if there are any.
Thanks, Kristi. Counsel, any, Councilmember Vaughn?
Thank you, Your Honor. Kristi, thank you for the presentation again, and I applaud you. You do a lot for a little budget, I got to admit. There's not much there for you guys to do it. But I'm curious, has your board looked at the option of, of going to travel shows, get out of Hastings? Is that the future where we get to staff a booth in Duluth to say, come visit Hastings for the weekend, or try to get? And if, if we can't afford it, does your board, are you able to accept donations to help fund activities? Or does it all have to come through the fees? That might be a question for administration, but two ideas, I'm just curious if your board has talked about them yet.
Yeah. So right now, we're, we're not able to accept donations for that. There are, Councilmember London, I have talked very briefly about this, there are other opportunities to increase that revenue stream. We are looking at working with a company where we could sell ads for the, the Visit Hastings Guide so we can get that advertising revenue. There are opportunities to, to bring in sponsorship through some of these partnered events. So, so there are opportunities in that way. And, and yes, the goal is to get Dave out there, to, to start attending some of these shows that we haven't historically been able to attend. A lot of our active lifestyle publications that we invest in are very gracious, and they take our publications with them to some of those larger shows that we cannot attend. And that's a lot of the reasons why we continue to partner with them. But yes, the goal is to, to start attending some of these tourism shows.
Councilmember Lund.
Thank you, Your Honor. So I think it's been three years, and we've been meeting regularly, the group has, and I just want to say that, you know, that from the very beginning to now, it's, it's leaps and bounds different. There's been a lot of thought put into everything that you're doing, and you're making improvements every year. So if we think back and just look back a few years ago to where we were then, to where you've brought it now, I just want to give you applause for that because it's really a much different program than it was before. And I, also, I want to, I want to, want you to talk about the fact that we're now in the Mall of America, because I think that's really cool.
Yes. So the, what Councilmember Lund is referring to is our, our Visitor Guide. So we, we work with Highway Information Centers and Tourism Bureaus, but we also had the opportunity to work with a really high-traffic tourism asset, which is the Mall of America. And so, we were put in a lottery, and we won, and now the, the Visit Hastings distribut, or brochure is at the Only in Minnesota section of the Mall of America.
That's us.
So, and that was Councilmember Lund's suggestion, so kudos to him.
Councilmember Bosak.
Thank you, Your Honor. Question about the finances, I don't know who to ask. Are, are we maxed on the lodging tax revenue? I know by statute, we can only tax so much. Are we taxing the full amount or just a portion of the full amount?
I believe we're taxing the full amount.
Okay. All right. That is my question. And just to say, follow up with what Councilmember Lund said, and I've said this to you before, but I can't say it enough, congratulations, it's just wonderful, the things that you are doing with the Chamber. We are so fortunate to have somebody like you as our director, and keep up the good work, and we look forward to many, many more things coming out of the Chamber office. Thank you again.
Thank you. I'm going to start coming to more council meetings, by the way.
Sure.
I feel awesome right now.
I think we all appreciate what you do, Kristi, and I know the business is due to.
We'll put you at the beginning of the agenda next time.
Yeah, she seems to be at the end at all of them, so.
Counsel, I'd accept a motion to approve a two-year agreement, January 1, 2020 through December 31, 2021, with the Chamber, Hastings Area Chamber of Commerce, to continue funding a Tourism Bureau for the purpose of marketing and promoting Hastings as a tourist destination, and to approve the Tourism Bureau's budget proposal for 2020.
Councilmember Lund, Councilmember Brooks, any other discussion? Councilmember Fulch?
Just so I don't forget to mention this, Kristi, I was at an event a few days ago that, where the county manager was speaking for Dakota County, and he announced that Hastings, our Spring Lake Park, will be receiving a herd of bison next summer. So just a heads up. I thought it was a great tourism, so I just had to throw it out there, sorry. Thanks.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails. Legislative priorities, Dan Motichia?
We, we have two very notable legislative priorities, both of our requests in the state bonding bill for this building and for Highway 316. Beyond that, we obviously have a lot of contact with state and also federal representatives and officials throughout the year. And as one example alluded to earlier tonight, a few of us will be at the League of Minnesota Cities Day at the Capitol in a couple of weeks. But aside from sort of the, the two bonding bill requests, Councilmember Brooks asked me, well, how do we make sure that the council is working together and on the same page for all these other contexts and, and potential legislative pieces we have out there? I don't have a good answer for Lori. The two things I would point at are, one, the council's guidelines on decorum indicate that if an individual council member's discussing a particular piece of legislation, that it's their responsibility to be clear about if they're presenting their own position, their own opinion, or if they're representing the entire council in an official capacity. But I think the more important piece really is, you know, maybe starting it today, certainly not reaching an end, but some discussion among all of you about are there other areas of legislation, whether it's something broad like local control or a very specific, you know, bill XYZ that you want to take a position on? But there isn't a real ask tonight, it's more just generating, hey, this is an area that you might want to have some discussion.
Councilmember Fulch?
Thank you for bringing up this issue. We tried a couple of years ago to have a little mini workshop, a one-day workshop, just to discuss it, but it wasn't, the discussion wasn't structured enough for us to really be productive in it. And so, so since then, I've put a lot of, you know, thought in, and paying attention to what the League of Minnesota City does on organizing, you know, legislative priorities for the state. We had Dave Udamoc here earlier. And so, what they, what they do is they start, I want to say it's maybe in April, if I remember correctly. They have four policy committees, which elected officials and appointed staff can serve on. And I served on one, I served on the Service Delivery Policy Committee this year, and, and another Hastings representative that was on there was Erica Henderson. Am I saying that right, Henderson? Yes. And, and so it's really interesting, so, so the groups, the four policy committees meet separately, they have a series, I want to say, of three meetings, each at a minimum. And then collectively, they pull together the legislative priorities for the League of Minnesota Cities. And at the annual meeting, that set of policies is adopted formally by the League. And so, so there's a document, Dan had provided to us, the ones that rise to the top are this worksheet, there's about 11 on there right now. And so, these are the, the highest priority policies, but there's about 200 policies that are within that overall document. And so, Hastings, I don't know if we sent a representative or not to the annual meeting, but to adopt, we did have a, a vote to adopt the legislative priorities that the League put forward. And so, something that I think that would behoove us to have further conversation about is, you know, of these 11, I mean, they're all really good policies, which we could all get, you know, behind, and, you know, which ones would we want to, I'm just throwing out ideas, like prioritize and be more active in pursuing. Carla Bigum, I know already, our senator, supports all of these particular issues. I, personally, I had on Saturday, I had attended, the League of Women Voters had a nonpartisan legislative panel, and afterwards, I talked to Carla about if, if she would be interested in looking more into legislation about putting money aside for local governments and fighting Emerald Ash Bore. Only a million dollars was approved last year statewide for, for local governments to be proactive, and it was just a drop in the bucket of what the need is going to be for our state. And so, I think it would be terrific if we had a conversation a little bit further, if there are other issues that we would like to be proactive on, if we want to have a workshop with our legislators, you know, about those issues that we have as priorities. And then, also, you know, this is going to be a short legis, legislative session, but how do we function better in the future so that we're more proactive? You know, we were fortunate that the House Committee, the House Capital Improvement Committee came and visited us, you know, and for people who weren't aware that the, their delegation did come to the city of Hastings, and the majority of us met them, and were happy to give them a little mini tour of our city hall, and then they, they looked at Highway 316. But what more could we be doing, you know, to get on the governor's priorities, his agenda? And then, and then also in the Senate? And so, it just seems like we could be a lot more proactive in the future. so it just seems like we could be a lot more proactive in the future and really identifying what are our priority issues. Like, we know EAB is going to hit us really hard in the next five to 10 years. So that's kind of a, you know, an easy, easy win. And so what are some of those other issues that maybe we want to identify? So I'm just throwing it out there. I don't have all the answers, but I just think that we have lots of opportunity to improve in this particular area.
Councilmember Vaughn.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I'd like what we currently do. I think we have, I like the rules of, of how we handle it. I like how we support the League of Minnesota Cities and we support, we're a member of metro cities. Again, more lobbyists, more communicators that are, I like us to stay in our lane. Those are legislative things and we can, we have opportunities. They invite us, they want us. Councilmember Fults, thanks for sitting on that because that's a time commitment to get onto a committee and help guide that policy that represents, as Dave Udomak said, 833 cities. Again, they're, they're at the Capitol, they're doing their jobs on behalf of us as communities. I like what we're doing. I do want to bring up, Dan, an example being that I'm on the Minnesota High Speed Rail, but that's a thing that we approve as a committee structure. And I think those are items that are in the legislative ears also, but that's an approved thing that we've already approved to be a member of. Now, if we don't want to have that on, I think that needs to be a flag saying we should be off of there because that, that group is also advocating for state funding, and it's gone through county and cities. So I think we got to be a little cautious. I like how we say you're representing yourself as a resident when we talk to a legislator, or on behalf of the city we represent, and this is a priority. I'm all in favor of having a great discussion of what should be our top three or four. And we got to come to a conclusion, though, these are what they are, and that's what we are focused on, staying in our lane and trying to get some more benefit out of it versus the one-offs over there. So I, I like what we're doing, and I think we should continue to stick with supporting the League of Minnesota Cities and be a member of metro cities. I think that's our best role in this case. Our legislators are, are great, if you ask me. They, they're asking us questions, and they're very receptive if we ever have a question for them. So I applaud those two right now. Thank you.
All right. We now have a proclamation declaring a citywide food fight for Minnesota Food Shelf and Hastings Family Service. And, want to go back to Lori and start?
Whereas Minnesota Food Share has coordinated a March campaign for 38 years to restock food shelves around the state of Minnesota, and?
Whereas one in 10 Minnesotans are food insecure and do not have access to adequate food on a regular basis, and?
Whereas, whereas Hastings Family Service serves an average of 100 families each month in the food shelf and has served the basic needs of our community since 1970, and?
Whereas 46% of our community members who visit the Hastings Family Service food shelf indicate that someone in their household has skipped a meal because there was not enough food, and?
Whereas the generosity of our community makes it possible for Hastings Family Service to provide help and a hope to our neighbors who lack food, housing, clothing, or transportation, and?
Whereas all gifts of money and food throughout the month of March are proportionally matched by Minnesota Food Share, and?
Now, therefore, be it resolved, I, Mary Fassbender, Mayor of the City of Hastings, do hereby declare a citywide food fight during the month of March to restock the food shelf at Hastings Family Service and fight hunger in our community. And Chris, I'd like to present this to you, and thank you for all that you do for our community. And if you want to say a few words, you can.
Well, thank you, and thank you for saving the best for last, right? And thank you for having us tonight and having me tonight. Just real briefly, Minnesota Food Share has been an important part of how we meet the needs of this community. And as was stated, we've been doing this for 50 years, coming next month. And Minnesota Food Share makes it possible, and we just launched a new program last year called Market Cart, where every single month, we're delivering fresh produce to 100 local seniors in our community. And on our very first visit to Oak Ridge Manor, back last January, husband and wife team, there were about 69 people that signed up. Were going through the line and picking out their produce, and they asked the husband, do you, do you want the broccoli and cauliflower? And he says, no, we don't eat that. And the wife chimed in right behind him and said, what do you mean? I love broccoli and cauliflower. And he turned around and said, well, what do you mean? After 65 years of marriage, I never knew you liked broccoli and cauliflower. Well, the reason that he didn't know that is because they hadn't been purchasing broccoli and cauliflower. That just was a luxury for them. This produce has been just an eye-opener to the, the hunger that does exist in our low-income seniors in our community. Minnesota Food Share makes that possible. So March 30, I believe, is council meeting. It also is our Hastings Tasteings, which is our annual Minnesota Food Share celebration. You are welcome to come from 5:30 until quarter to 7:00 and still get into your, into the chambers here if you'd like to help support Minnesota Food Share, or go to our website and learn how you can be someone who is fighting hunger in our community. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and?
Your Honor, if I can just point out here, we do not have a council meeting on the 30th, so I, I expect all of us to get there and dig out. All right.
Okay, and our last thing was our, from our consent agenda, Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I, I pulled it just so that we could have a quick conversation or education on this, which is the study review of our utility. About three years ago, I think it was one of the very first things that the, the new group of us worked on. And at that time, we did a pretty significant wholesale change to the, the way that we view and, and charge for utilities. One of the things that is of note is that we changed the whack and sack, or sack and whack, to, to be a 25% reduction with the intent there, just as a reminder, because things happen. Three years go by, and this isn't on everybody's mind all the time, probably. So with the intent to, to help ease the concerns of some of the, the businesses that are looking to expand or develop or come in and, and develop some property here, saying that some of our fees maybe were a little bit challenging to take on. So the thought was, at that point in time, let's, let's look at the, the overall opportunity and what we can comfortably absorb. Obviously, the money has to come from somewhere. So it wasn't just 25% off, and then we didn't have to account for it otherwise. So we were taking it a little bit easy with the idea that we would be exactly where we are right now, reviewing it. That was a commitment that, that we made, and I'm glad that we are doing this. So we will be looking at this again. My, my, my hope is that, I'm going to look at Dan over here, Julie, if you could just explain what the, what the thought is as far as it relates to sack and whack for this particular, that's not the whole thing that this is, obviously, but that's the element that I'd like to talk about and what, what will be reviewed and, and what will we, as a council, be looking at for recommendations or information regarding whack and sack?
Sure. As you noted, really, I, I do think that the main piece is looking at the finances over the utilities overall, not, this is not specifically about sewer and water access charges, sack and whack, but it is an element, certainly is. In the Eller's proposal that you guys have in your packet, step five speaks a little bit to that review of those connection charges. It dedicates four hours of the study specifically to that piece. It's a little bit of a ballpark and estimate. The exact scope or definition of what the, the sack and whack examination will entail is unspecified at this point, other than identifying it's something that we want to make sure is looked at. So it may be a little bit less, it may be a little bit more than the four hours, but they've allocated in this proposal for that. One of the key pieces to looking at the sack and whack charges is the portions of the model, and particularly the Capital Improvement Program, the CIP, that identifies projects that are development or redevelopment-related, the projects that would be eligible for funding or partial funding through those access charges, the sack and whack. In identifying those specific projects, it allows, you know, essentially a matter of saying, here's how much money is needed, and based on here's historic or projected. You know, for example, if we know that there's a senior housing building coming on, or 120 lots on the annexed property, if there's some ability to project specific projects, what ability do we have to, to fund those, those necessary growth-related projects? That really is going to be the key piece in the model to determining where the sack and whack charge should be. It also will balance with the user rates overall. You know, if, if a project is needed, but the sack funds are not sufficient, the money needs to come from somewhere. And actually, we've seen that over the last, I guess, 10 years, maybe. In 2006, the city council significantly increased the, the whack, the water charge related to improvements to the water treatment plant, intending for the, the whack charges to pay a significant portion of the, the debt payments, the bond payments on that. And then development dried up with the recession, and the, the user charges have made, had to make all, you know, almost all of those payments since then. So there's a balance there between the sack and, and the whack, or the sack charges as well as the user charges. But it's certainly an element in here. It's, the big piece is going to be looking at what are the projected projects, lay that out next to projected growth over, you know, the next 10 years or longer, and see how that compares with, with user charges.
Councilmember Fults?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Councilmember Lund, for pulling this issue. I had sent an email a week or two ago requesting that we, we also put together information for the public so that businesses, when they have, when they would like to have a formal, I don't want to say complaint, but if, what would the right word be, if they wanted to contest the sack and whack fees that they're being assessed. Just so that it's clear, what is the process? Because I have to admit, I've been on the council for three years, and it's a little fuzzy to me even, actually, as to what is, you know, what are, you know, step one is what, and then step two is what? And eventually, it goes to the Met Council, and the Met Council determines what the sack and whack fees are, and then it comes back to who. And if, and if a business owner in Hastings is not happy with that, what is the formal process that they have to file a complaint with the city to contest it, so that it's clear to all of us? Because my understanding is that we, as a council, do not have the authority to change the city portion of the sack and whack fees for, on an individual basis. And so I would like to see that in writing. And if, and if that's not true, then what is the formal process that they can go through to contest it, so that it's clear, crystal clear to everybody as to what this process is? Because we just recently had a, you know, an upset business owner who didn't understand the process. It wasn't clear exactly how it should all be handled. And, and that person unfortunately is, you know, he is unhappy. And so I hate to see someone be unhappy because the process wasn't clear. That seems like that, that's such an easy thing to fix, that it's a communications issue. So just to have that more definitive as to what is that process? And, and, and the chamber could help us get that information out as a, for instance, so that, because I keep hearing this from the business community the last few years, that they're really unhappy with sack and whack fees. And so how do we bring clarity to that issue so that they feel like we're working with them? Right? Okay, enough said. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Brooks?
So I don't, I don't want to go too deep into this rabbit hole, because I realize we've already talked about it a little bit. But I think there's two things that I've realized as I've thought about this over the last three to four years. One is that if we reduce sack and whack for businesses, the burden of that cost goes to our residents. And our residents are already paying, I believe, and I'm, this is just off the top of my head, more than 60% of those fees already. So I will be interested to see what the results of the study are, because I'm hesitant to sit, I'm hesitant to sit here and make any kind of commitment to changing that when the residents are already bearing the burden of these fees more so than the business community, in my opinion. And the second thing I wanted to say is that I think this is something that may be a point of legislative advocacy with the Metropolitan Council. Because what I see is that when you have a corporation who is doing a development, or a property development company, or a developer who is experienced, they know these fees are coming, they build them into their budget, they expect them. But what we have in Hastings are a lot of small business owners who either already own a small business or have run one in the past, or maybe they're starting a small business for the first time. And I think these fees do disproportionately impact them, because they don't have a real estate company running their process for them. It's the individual person who's walking through all the steps. So I think that, what was interesting to me, I pulled up the form where, on the Metropolitan Council website, where you calculate the sack and whack from their point of view. And it's very interesting how it's calculated, because if you look at the size of the business, you enter your square footage, and then you pick from a list of what kind of business you are. And there's no distinction between a, a green mill-size restaurant and one that is, say, the size of the Onion Grill. Those are essentially treated the same based on their square footage. And so you could have a very small business and a very large, more franchise-oriented business. And I feel like, in this case, because we have so many more small business owners in Hastings, which I think is great. I think it's one of our assets, because we have people working on our community that are connected to the community. They're donating to the All Night Graduation Party. They are donating to the United Way. They're very invested in our community. But when these fees come up, I feel like it's always semi-surprising, expensive, and I can understand, if I'm a small business owner and I'm writing my business plan, and I get to the part where I have to pay these fees, and it's $16,000 or $17,000, that's a lot, when you're taking out a loan or starting a business for the first time. So I think we have opportunities to advocate. I don't know exactly what that looks like, and I'm not saying I have a plan. But when it goes to, when it comes to the Metropolitan Council and sort of how they categorize things, I feel that it disproportionately does affect Hastings because of the types of businesses that we have here. And it might be something that we could discuss in the future, how we could approach our legislators at the state level to say, hey, this, the way this is set up is negatively impacting Hastings, and what else can we do about it? So I don't have a solution, but as I've been thinking about this over a long period of time, that's kind of one of the answers, in addition to getting more data and seeing the results of the study, is how can we think more broadly about solving this problem with the people who are in charge of setting the rates, and, and maybe do some advocacy on our own behalf, on our, on behalf of our small businesses, to see what we could do in the future.
Councilmember Lund?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that's really a very good point. And, Dan, that might be your first legislative priority on your list that you just asked for. So there you go. But, no, I, all seriousness, that, that was an excellent point and well said. But you can also look, and we, we should talk about this, we'll talk about this more later. I didn't know if I really meant for this to be this long of a discussion, but it's good. It comes up a lot. People don't always know that, but it does. And you can look at it a couple of ways. You can look at it like, well, we're, we're trying to influence development and businesses to, to grow. You know, there, there are those businesses where they're maybe operating in part of a building, and they want to, they're doing well, and they want to expand to another part of a building, or move to a different building, or whatever, and then they're penalized with, they feel they're being penalized with this, this rate that they weren't, weren't planning for, or whatnot. So that can be challenging, and it can be, it can be discouraging. So that can be challenging, and it can be, it can be discouraging. And so we can look at it that way, which I think part of the reason why we did do that to begin with was to help encourage some of that development and business influence. The flip side of it is, too, if we lean too much on forecasting of how things are going to progress for commercial development five, 10 years down the road, that can lead us into a dangerous spot, too. So that has to be considered. We are, we're already, that's what this whole thing was about to begin with a few years ago, was how do we dig ourselves out of this hole, so that we, as residents, have viable, safe solutions for sewage, and for source, you know, for supply water, and so forth? So our infrastructure is going to be sound, and we can build out from there. So councilmember Brax brings up, well, it's disproportionate to residents versus business, and that's very, very much a valid point, but if we put it all on the business, or we put an inappropriate amount on the business, and I don't know what that number is, that's what the study should tell us, then it doesn't happen because of this, that, or the other reason, then guess what? It's going to have to either go back on the residents, again, in a more of an emergency, unexpected way, or like a huge step change, rather than a gradual type of increase, or we just forego improvements that are necessary for our health and our livelihood. So it's just not one thing or the other, it may be all things need to be considered, and we kind of pick our direction, but that was what I wanted to do. I wanted to, I wanted to have the conversation, I wanted you to state that we are going to talk about this and look at this, and there's time dedicated to that, because I want people out there to understand that this isn't just something that, yeah, we hear you complain, and, you know, we'll talk about it later, we actually are.
Great. Councilmember Belsanik?
Last week, I attended a meeting with some business owners, primarily talking about this very subject, and I was, I was irritated, dismayed at some of the comments that were made about our city and our city staff regarding the assignment of the whack and sack fees. There was a comment made by a very prominent business owner, that he thought that we were taking these sack and whack fees and sticking them into some other budget to help ourselves out, instead of using them for what they're supposed to be. Had another very prominent business owner complain because he had to pay $200,000 for his whack and sack fees, and this is the same business where the city, the state, and the federal government has supplied millions of dollars to take care and scrub and prepare his property, so that he can do what he wants to do. And I get very angry at that, and I said so at the meeting, I thought, in a very diplomatic way, but as we were walking out of the meeting, both of those business owners said to me, get rid of the sack and whack, get rid of the sack and whack. And I said to them, as we were walking to our cars, who's going to pay for this infrastructure if we eliminate the sack and whack for businesses? We already had to raise the water and sewer fees for everybody in town, who's a resident, because we projected that if we didn't, in three or four years, it was going to be in the hole. So we had to make an accommodation, and we raised it. Where is the problem? It's not the legislature, that's not who we need to run to. It's the Met Council, who I love and I hate. I love them and I hate them. They're appointed, they're not elected, they're appointed by the governor, and they're there, and they're insulated, and they have a staff that wants to do things easily, so they say an Applebee's credit for sack and whack is the same as a froth and cork. No, it's not. It is not. And somehow, we've got to let that Met Council know. Not the staff members, but the Met Council. And I have talked to Christie, I said that I wanted to have a meeting with Wendy Wolf, who's the Met Council appointee, who represents our district, to start talking about this, to see if we could make her aware of what's going on. I mean, what I would like to see is you've got a sack and whack credit, not credit, but it's a, what, a debit or?
Unit.
Unit, okay. Sack and whack unit, but there's a, it's a unit point one, point two, point three, point four, so that a coffee shop is not going to be lumped in with an Applebee's or a green mill. That's the problem with the system right now. And it's because we've got a Met Council that is appointed, and they're insulated, and they don't hear from people like us. So that's who we've got to go talk to, and we're going to set up a time. I'm going to contact Wendy and see what time she's available, and we're going to get together and start to talk about this, to see what we can do to break this mold. But in the meantime, I'm very upset with the business owners in this community who have taken it upon themselves to accuse our city staff and our city council of perhaps some canary, of taking something that maybe we don't have to and using it someplace else. My God, folks, and I told them at this meeting, we get audited every year, and we come out smelling like a rose, because what is allocated in terms of sack and whack units gets used for what it's supposed to. What is allocated for the fire department is used for what it's supposed to, what's allocated for the police department, right on down the line. And I'm very upset that we've got prominent business owners in this community who we have bent over backwards to accommodate, so they can do their business downtown here, to sit there and be accusatory towards us. I find that offensive. I find that offensive. And business owners, if you're listening to me, you know who you are, and if you want to have another meeting, that's fine, we'll have it, but I'm not going to be as nice as I was at the meeting last week. Thank you, your honor.
Councilmember Vine?
Hi. Thank you, your honor. I'm going to try to wrap this up here, I appreciate councilmember Lund pulling this off, because I think it's important to let the community know, when I was on the finance committee, when we chaired this week, we hired this independent company, does the research, they're going to do it again, because I think it's a good check-in, and I think we required that last time we went through this. I think it's a good recap. I hear the Met Council, everybody has their opinions of them, but I tell you what, I would suggest that during one of our workshops, we invite down, I've talked to the person that runs the SAC program, remember, Met Council's only SAC, role play, role three, role play a business coming through, that employee is very educational, and I think it's about application process, how you fill it out, architects fill it out sometimes for small business owners, sometimes for big, it's a whole different ballgame, and I shared something with Dan, and Christie was on it, too. I think we, as a council, are going to do a better job, and the city staff, of kind of a check sheet. I want to start a business in this community, I'm copying it from Member Fults, they did an excellent job of, did you think of this, did you think of that? It was a great document, and we have a great document already through the chamber, and I think this is just going to enhance it. I think that's the role that we, as a body, need to do, is really get on the educational side in advance of this, and educate ourselves. I mean, we need to bring that staff member down, nothing against Wendy Wolf, she represents us, Wendy should come to the meeting and listen to it, but really, let's get the expert that's in the room, that's doing the research for this, to educate us, so we can help actually with that document. So appreciate you bringing it up, councilmember Lund, but I think it's worth another discussion as we get going. Thank you.
Councilmember Fults?
I was going to say, I know that the Met Council actually did, I'm not sure if they're still taking comments, because they were relooking at the whack and sack fees, but I know that there have been opportunities in the last several months where they've had a feedback working group to look at fee structures, and I've seen it, but you have to, like, read the metro cities, when you see the metro cities' updates, like, watch for it there, I don't know, there might be an opportunity for staff to follow up and see if one of us could get to assign to one of those committees.
Okay. Okay, great discussion, council, any announcements? Oh, sorry. You're right. Okay. Okay. Any other discussion, council? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Any announcement, council? Okay, councilmember Fults?
First, going back to the legislative discussion, as we were having that, this just kind of got snipped off, I'd just like to make a request, that if we receive from any elected officials that are higher than the city councils, or state, so our house rep, or senate rep, our congressional reps, if we receive correspondences from them that they're going to introduce a bill on behalf, and they want our staff or elected officials to come and represent, I would like to know when that happens, because like as a, for instance, a few years ago, when Representative Jurgens had introduced a bill to help stop the increase on the Highway 316 from the speed limit, Mayor Hicks had let me know it's my ward, and he had also, we had, councilmember Lund, I'm getting tired, councilmember Lund and councilmember Belsanik, the three of us went with constituents, and we sat, and we testified at the House in favor of this bill, and why it was important, and Mayor Hicks had submitted a letter also supporting the legislation, and I thought it was really beneficial. I think it's important that elected officials, besides just staff, get the opportunity to testify in favor of bills, and I think that we should all know when these requests come forward, and also when they make requests to meet with staff, so that we're available in case we would like to participate in that in the future. So that's my two cents on that, just to share communications. And then, and then the thing that I wanted to give an update was, was on the 2020 census, I got this handy-dandy talking card real quick, and so it turns out that the Census Bureau will be sending out this next week to all of us, every single one of us, they are going to be sending an invitation to respond to the census in the mail, and then what's different this year is that you have to respond yourself. So you'll receive the notice, you're going to have like a special ID number for yourself, and you have to respond, you can go online to do the questionnaire, you can fill it out, you can call by phone and have it done, or you can request a hard copy in the mail to complete it, and then if you don't respond, April 28th through August, census workers will contact you if you haven't responded to the census. And why that's so important is that everybody in our community needs to be counted, the federal government uses our census information in determining the distribution of billions and billions of dollars to our communities for health and education services, highway planning and construction services, and it also will be super important in 2020, because, I'm sorry, in 2022, we will redistrict our senate and our senate districts, and so we'll have different representation lines, and all of that will be determined on the census information, and so it is really important, and I would just, I'm just bringing this up so folks know that it's coming, and that they should really take it seriously in responding right away. Thanks.
Okay, announcements tomorrow, election day is Tuesday, March 3rd, for the presidential nomination primary. Polls will open from 7:00 to 8:00 PM, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. Help your 5th through 8th grader stay busy over spring break. Register for alternative spring break Tuesday through Thursday, March 17th through the 19th, where they will spend time volunteering on local service projects, followed by a fun group outing. Register for single days or all three. Register online. Meetings coming up, our Planning Commission will meet Monday, March 9th at 7:00 PM. Parks and Recreation Commission will meet Tuesday, March 10th at 7:00 PM. HEDRA will meet Thursday, March 12th at 6:00 PM. Joint HEDRA and City Council meeting on Monday, March 16th at 5:30, and our next council meeting is Monday, March 16th at 7:00 PM. Okay, council, I'd accept a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Fults, councilmember Brax, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion prevails.